Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Do we have any closed session reports?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Would Chief Spikerman of the Ventura County Fire Department please lead us in the pledge?
As I already just stand, place your right hand over your bar. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have a roll call?
Roll call, Councilmember Littster?
Here.
Councilmember Lou Evinos?
Here.
Councilmember Judge?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Kavanaugh?
Here.
Mayor Mashburn?
Here.
Has everybody had the opportunity to look at the agenda? Any changes? Changes?
We have supplemental to Agenda Item 8B. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, that's all.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. 1A?
I move that all resolutions and orances presented tonight be read in title only, and all further reading be waived.
Second?
Call for the vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, does anybody have a declaration of conflict with anything on the agenda this evening? Well, okay.
All right. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the first item on the agenda is 1D, Special Presentations, Honorary Resolutions, and Proclamations. We have 1D1, Presentation of an Honorary Resolution Commending Officer Jessica Newman as Officer of the Year, and Chief David Livingstone is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and City Councilmembers. It's my pleasure to introduce the Simi Valley Police Department's Officer of the Year, Officer Jessica Newman. Jessica, will you please come to the front of the council chamber? Jessica was chosen as the 2018 Officer of the Year by her police department peers for her dedication to her job and her work ethic. She was honored at the annual Simi Valley Police Community Awards Dinner held on May 10th. Jessica's parents, Michelle and Eric, her boyfriend Kevin, and friend Lindsay are here with her tonight. It is now my privilege to read the contents of the honorary resolution. There's going to be a lot of wheresses here, which Mayor Mashburn appreciates. Whereas the Simi Valley Police Department annually selects a member of its force to receive the Officer of the Year Award, and no higher honor can be received than the recognition of one's peers within the public perfec- within the police profession for distinguished service. And whereas the Simi Valley Police Officer of the Year Award for 2018 has been bestowed upon Officer Jessica Newman as the officer most distinguished within the Simi Valley Police Department due to her outstanding service to the community and dedication to her profession. And whereas Officer Newman was sworn in as a Simi Valley Police Officer in 2011 and assigned to the patrol unit, transferred to the traffic unit as a motor officer in 2016, and is a member of the department's bicycle team, use-of-force review board, and recruitment team, is a certified drug recognition expert, a co-captain of the department's Baker-to-Vegas running team, and a former Explorer advisor. And whereas Officer Newman is the recipient of numerous awards from Mothers Against Drunk Driving in the department for her work removing impaired drivers from the roadways. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Simi Valley that it hereby extends to Officer Newman its highest commendation for the excellent quality of work she performs and her commitment to her profession. Presented this 13th day of May 2019.
So hopefully, out on the streets of good old Simi Valley, you haven't had the pleasure of meeting Jessica. But she is one that protects us daily, risks her life daily. She rides a motorcycle out there doing her patrol. And she's very hard to locate. I always try locating her because my wife, who has a tendency to drive too fast, I tell her, "Watch out, Jessica's over here. You gotta go slow." And we gotta come up with some kind of GPS system to keep an eye on this lady. But in all seriousness, it's such an honor to have Jessica as the Officer of the Year. And we're so privileged as a city to have officers like Jessica because I think she would also tell you, there's so many that could be Officer of the Year. We have a great police department, and she exemplifies why it's great. So thank you very much.
I just want to thank you all. I appreciate it. I appreciate the department for recognizing me. And again, sorry if you've received a ticket from me at some point. But really, my intention is just to keep the city safe and to protect all of you from the ones who choose to make bad decisions on that day. So thank you all so much. Thank you for my family for being here, and thank you for recognizing me in this position. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item is Item 1D2, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Day of May 15, 2019 as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And I believe Chief Livingstone is still here to make this presentation.
Thank you. Mayor Mashburn and members of the City Council, the City of Simi Valley has issued a proclamation declaring May 15, 2019, Peace Officers Memorial Day, and Sergeant Tim Wiedemeyer will accept it on behalf of the police department. Tim, will you please join us at the front of the council chambers? Sergeant Wiedemeyer was hired by LAPD in 2003 and joined SVPD as a lateral police officer in 2008. He was assigned to the patrol unit until he was transferred to the Special Enforcement Section in 2012. In 2013, Tim was selected as a K-9 officer and was partnered with K-9 Thor for five and a half years before being promoted to sergeant earlier this year. He is a member of the bicycle patrol team, the recognition committee, the equipment committee, the safety committee, and is the current POA president. Peace Officers Memorial Day serves as a tribute to Simi Valley Police Officer Michael Clark and all of our nation's national, all of our nation's law enforcement officers who have paid so high a price protecting the freedoms that we enjoy every day. It is also a reminder to all of us who are called to this profession that our commitment and dedication are recognized and appreciated by the citizens in the communities we serve. It is now my privilege to read the proclamation. Whereas peace officers throughout the United States pursue it to their sworn duty to safeguard lives and property, place their lives on the line to maintain public order daily, and each year hundreds of peace officers are either slain or injured in their attempt to protect and serve their communities. And whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy, in conjunction with Congress, first proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day in recognition of the law enforcement professionals killed or injured while protecting the lives and property of American citizens. And whereas it is desirable to remind the community of these officers' sacrifices and to support those who day and night stand guard to protect all citizens through enforcement of the law. And whereas the tragic loss of Officer Michael Clark on August 4, 1995 will forever endow a special and very personal meaning upon Peace Officers Memorial Day for our community and its police officers. Now therefore, in recognition of those officers who regularly risk their lives and those who have sacrificed their lives in the line of duty, Wednesday, May 15, 2019, is hereby proclaimed Peace Officers Memorial Day in the City of Simi Valley to encourage all citizens to join in recognition of these officers and order the flags at all city facilities to be flown at half-staff as a visible sign of our tribute. Presented this 13th day of May 2019.
If I can, I think it's only appropriate that we ask Officer Mike Judge to come down and make this presentation. Chief of the Fire Department, we can do ours later. We'll let the police officers do it.
Wow, I didn't say that. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of, I mean, this is a great honor for our police department and for all the police officers that live in our city and all the police officers that serve our nation. Today was the day that many of the Southern California police departments laid their wreaths at the tomb of the lost in Washington, DC. So this just goes right along with that. I want to thank the City Council, the mayor, for presenting this to our police department.
I was gonna try to scoot out of here without saying anything, but Jessica didn't follow my rules, so she can't let her show me up. Once again, thank you, Council, very much, mayor, and of course, the citizens of Simi Valley. I've worked for two different cities, and it's a drastic difference. And what we have here is something special. We have a very special community, and you have a special police department that loves working for you guys. So we appreciate the support. Keep it up. We're trying our hardest. Things are kind of tough right now with some legislation, some other things going on in California. But know that we have your backs, and we hope you guys continue to have our backs because we will be out there to help you guys out and to keep you guys safe. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item is Item 1D3, Presentation of Certificates of Commendation to Team 986A, Grace Brethren Robotics 2019 Design Award at VEX California State Championship, 2019 Design Award at VEX World Championship. And Samantha Argabright is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the City Council. This evening, as you heard, we are recognizing Team 986A from Grace Brethren. The design award is presented to a team that demonstrates an organized and professional approach to the design process, project, and time management, and team organization. A little background on the VEX Robotics Competition. The VEX Robotics Competition is one of the largest and fastest-growing robotics engineering programs in the world. Each year, students design, build, and program a robot to address a new engineering challenge that is presented in the form of a game. Teams compete throughout the year at a series of local, state, and regional events seeking to qualify for the VEX Robotics World Championship, the culminating event that draws hundreds of the best teams from around the globe. Students gain valuable life skills in addition to learning engineering and design principles related to STEM. We are recognizing five students and two team mentors this evening. As I call your name, please come forward. Chandler Nelson, Joseph Kaya, Kayden Reganstrath, Hayden Nelson. I'm sorry, Kayden, if that was completely wrong. Logan McNeil. And the mentors for Team 986A are Donna Shem and Bill Shem.
So this is getting pretty exciting. We had the football team, and now we have this team, the robotics team. And we're hearing a lot from Grace Brethren, and just adding to the list of wonderful achievements that schools in Simi Valley are accomplishing. So we thank you very much and keep up the good work.
Yeah, these students have worked all year. This is an after-school program. They put a lot of hard work into it. They have to build it and program it. And the way it works is the first 15 seconds of the game, which the conference is a total of two minutes, is for programming. The robot has to do, score points on its own. So they've worked very hard. They've done exceptionally well. The design award is a very prominent award at Worlds. We just got back from Louisville, Kentucky, where there was about six or seven hundred teams in the high school division. So it was a great competition. There's about sixty countries that participate. So this is really a world event. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item is 1D4, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Days of May 25 and May 26, 2019 as Cajun and Blues Music Festival Days. And Samantha Argabright is still here to make this presentation.
Good evening. It's that time of year again when the Cajun and Blues Music Festival comes to Simi Valley and livens up Memorial Day weekend with music, dancing, food, and fun. I would like to invite Stella Ortiz, member of the Simi Sunrise Rotary and chair of the Cajun and Blues Music Festival, to come forward as I read the proclamation. Whereas on May 25 and 26, 2019, the Rotary Club of Simi Sunrise will hold its 30th Annual Cajun Blues and Music Festival. And whereas the festival is an eagerly anticipated community event that over its 29-year history has raised well over a million dollars to assist a wide range of local nonprofit organizations in delivering services to Simi Valley residents. And whereas numerous corporate sponsors and volunteers donate countless hours of their time to make the festival possible. And whereas over the two-day event, it is estimated that eighteen thousand people from near and far will come to Simi Valley to listen to the Saideco music and the blues, to enjoy Cajun and Creole cuisine, and to experience the camaraderie of a true community gathering. And whereas the Cajun and Blues Music Festival is one of Ventura County's largest annual fundraising events, benefiting nonprofit organizations and serving our community's health, cultural traditions, and social needs. Now therefore, May 25 and 26, 2019, are hereby proclaimed Cajun and Blues Music Festival Days in the City of Simi Valley to encourage all citizens to partic- excuse me, to participate in this two-day community event and to celebrate its 30th anniversary. Presented this 13th day of May.
So I don't know how many of you are aware of what goes on with the Rotary in this city, but you haven't gotten out enough if you didn't realize that the Rotary is active in almost every type of help for the community that there, anybody could even think of asking for. And they raise so many funds, and they do so much work, just hard labor sometimes. Instead of raising money, they go out and they do yard work for people that can't. It's just amazing. So I'd like to ask at this time, if you're a Rotary member, please stand, and I know who you are, so all of you stand. We appreciate everything you do.
On behalf of the Simi Sunrise Rotary Club, I'd like to accept this for our achievement over the years of our Cajun and Blues Festival. Thank you to the City of Simi Valley. What started off 29 years ago as a simple clam bake to raise just some funds for here locally in Simi Valley turned out to be an enormous event where we are able to provide a lot of profits, or well, all of our profits. But I will make a correction. It is over $2 million that have been donated over the thirty, 29 years. So we are very proud of that. Thank you for the opportunity.
Can I add? Isn't it polio that Rotary has taken on as a project to eradicate worldwide? And you're almost there.
Almost.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 1D5, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Week of May 19 through May 25, 2019 as Public Works Week. And Ron Fujiwaki is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and councilmembers. I'd like to invite Jose Galindo and Jorge Diaz to join us this evening. They are Public Works employees and are part of our building maintenance section. They're here to accept the proclamation. Proclamation reads as follows. Whereas public works facilities and services provided in our community are an integral and essential part of our citizens' daily lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems, programs, such as water, sewer, public buildings, streets, highways, and flood control. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. Whereas, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, construction, and maintenance, depend on the efforts and skills of public works personnel supported by the public's awareness and understanding of the role of these public servants. Now therefore, the week of May 19 through May 25, 2019, is hereby proclaimed Public Works Week in the City of Simi Valley to encourage all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing public works facilities and services to our community and to recognize the contributions which public works personnel make toward our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Presented this 13th day of May 2019.
I think we've all talked about, when you drive down the road and you see a hole being dug, and there's one or two people digging the hole, and there's fifteen watching. I can tell you, I've lived here a long time. I drive up and down LA Avenue, Cinemark, you name it. You don't see that in Simi Valley. When you see those white trucks out there, or when you come into City Hall, these gentlemen are always working. And it's hard to even strike up a conversation with them because they want to keep doing their job. I mean, it's just amazing, the good work that you do. And I know myself, as kind of a city employee, I see what you do and certainly appreciate what you do. And the City Council all appreciate your work. And I, if the citizens all saw what these gentlemen do, you two would feel the way I do about them.
Thank you, mayor. We are very happy, continue work very hard for the city. I don't know how long, but continue work. Very happy. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item is 1D6, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Month of May 2019 as Mental Health Awareness Month. And Kristin Tignak is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the City Council. This evening, we are recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. At this time, I would like to invite the following. Sorry. I'd like to invite the following individuals to come forward. Youth Council Chair Hamna Ahmad and her fellow Royal High School Citizen Scholar Institute peers, Alexis Scheibert and Chloe Tenyard. In Simi Valley, we are fortunate to have many individuals and organizations that are committed to providing a healthy living environment for all of our residents. These organizations are able to enhance the quality of life in our community through offering programming that addresses the complex issues regarding mental health. As an example, Ms. Ahmad, Ms. Scheibert, and Ms. Tenyard are coordinating and hosting a suicide and mental health awareness speaker summit titled "The Power of Talking" on May 22. And now the proclamation reads. Whereas developing and maintaining healthy physical and mental habits are an essential component of a healthy community. And whereas misunderstandings exist about many mental health illnesses in our culture, yet attending to the mental health is as important to a person's well-being as physical health. And whereas serious mental health illnesses have been scientifically proven to be highly treatable illnesses of the brain and more common than cancer, diabetes, and heart disease, and are the number-one reason for hospital admissions nationwide. And whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness. And whereas the City of Simi Valley is committed to promoting a healthy community. And whereas the Simi Valley Youth Council works to increase awareness of mental health resources throughout the city and has organized a social media campaign throughout the month of May to help promote mental health awareness and decrease the stigma surrounding mental illness. Now therefore, the month of May 2019 is hereby proclaimed Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Simi Valley to increase public awareness of mental health. Presented this 13th day of May.
So ladies, I don't want to say the folks my age failed, but we certainly could have done a better job as far as awareness of mental health issues goes. And we're very, very lucky to have young adults like yourselves come here and bring the awareness up because we too, at our young ages, are learning a lot from you, and we appreciate what you're teaching us.
We are co-hosting a mental health panel in honor of Mental Health Awareness Month. This panel will be held in Royal High School's gym on May 22 at 5:00 PM with speakers who will discuss the causes of depression and how to deal with them, as well as promoting the many resources that our city has to offer. This event will highlight the power of talking about an issue that is often overlooked. We invite you all to attend to become more aware of this topic and how you can help your peers understand as well.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item is 1D7, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Month of June 2019 as LGBTQ Pride Month. And Samantha Argabright is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the City Council. This evening, the City Council is proclaiming June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month. And Minister Curtis Rogers of the United Church of Christ is here to accept the proclamation. Minister Rogers, will you please come forward as I read the proclamation? Whereas on June 28, 1969, the LGBTQ+ community took a brave stand for human rights at the Stonewall Inn in New York City, marking a monumental step for LGBTQ+ equal rights. And whereas each June, cities and towns throughout the United States celebrate LGBTQ+ Pride Month to acknowledge the bravery it takes for LGBTQ+ people to come out as their true selves, build community, and promote equal rights for all. And whereas a tremendous amount of progress has been made since Stonewall, members of the LGBTQ+ community still face discrimination simply for being who they are. And whereas Pride Month offers the community an opportunity to reflect upon the discrimination and inequality that has troubled LGBTQ+ people while celebrating and embracing the work of individuals and organizations who have continuously fought to create equality for all. Now therefore, the month of June 2019 is hereby proclaimed LGBTQ+ Pride Month in the City of Simi Valley in recognition of the contributions of the LGBTQ+ pride community. Presented this 13th day of May 2019.
Simi Valley is a comfortable home to everybody, and we strive to make it that way. And yes, some of us learn a little bit of awareness as we grow older. And, but this is a city that is capable of learning and a city that is a welcoming place for everyone.
So when, I'd like to thank Mayor Mashburn, the Simi Valley City Council, and Councilmember Lovanos, who has been a great friend and ally to our church, our group, and our community. It's a, I know for some folks, it's probably a bit of a stretch and maybe kind of makes you a little nervous that this is happening. But for a lot of us, this is very important. you a little nervous that this is happening, but for a lot of us, this is very important because it acknowledges us as human beings, us as children of God, and us as citizens of this community. And so, thank you very much on behalf of all the LGBTQ people in this community who have been living in the corners and in the shadows, that they may be able to live out in the light of this city and be part of this community in a more visible way. Thank you.
Item 2A is the time and place for public statements for all items on the agenda other than public hearing items. Comments on public hearing items will be taken at that time. You will have three minutes to address the council. At two and a half minutes, the yellow light on the podium will go on, and we ask that you complete your comments during these last 30 seconds in order that other citizens may receive their opportunity to speak. When the red light goes on, you will be asked to conclude your comments. Okay, this evening, we have, I will call them in groups of three. The first speaker we have is Mandy Jacobs. Then we have Paige Nielsen and Mike King.
Hi. I'm here to talk to you tonight about 5G, as we've always been doing, about the wireless industry, and just for you guys to know how deceptive they are. This is really one of our final outcries to ask you to please maintain your local control and not hand it over to them. Most people, when they talk about technology, they're always worried about the progressive part, but no one's actually questioning why the FCC hasn't got any negative connotations and how they actually get away with not protecting the public. And the answer is pretty obvious. It's the wireless industry that's controlling them. They're not worried about health and their residents, and the main reason is also because they get funding that skews the information about health. The FCC is actually, their exposure levels are 30-year-old exposure levels. The public is going to get sick. In the short term, the illnesses will just be neurological, but long-term, they'll be cancerous. We've got cases in Camarillo where there was a school and there was already two sick cancer, one's a student that's there. There is no 4G or 5G device that actually has ever been safely tested by the FCC. Why is this wrong? Because the real health problem is how the technology affects the biology and the DNA damage that's done. When 5G actually goes live, we're facing greater environmental and safety risks in the long term. And why? Just because some people want to, sorry, just because some people want to download things from the internet quicker. Ironically, the industry is forcing directed beams into our windows that aren't even allowed in their safety labs. When questioned, the FCC simply shrugged it off and said, "This is not an issue that needs discussing." They know that continuous pulsed modulated radiation is harmful, but they leave it up to the cities to protect their residents. Why are they using these dangerous power levels that exceed what is needed just for a text or a phone call, that it's unnecessary and harms the public? The answer, easy, corporate greed. It's a power grab for the Comcast business that they lost, and now they offer wireless subscriptions. Ironically, according to the 1996 TCA Act, the only obligation that a city has to provide the telecoms is the ability to make a phone call. There's no case law that includes data coverage, high net internet speeds, yet data capacity is included in our ordinance here in Simi Valley, and we really should eliminate it. In light of the increasing and proven federal ethical government standards, we have to seriously consider our exam, our options, or pick our poison. Door one, risk having our town to be one of the many other local cities that are in this lawsuit. Or two, do not stand up for rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Okay? Please don't choose the second.
We are asking you to set up meetings with Katie, Congressman Katie Hill, Julia Brownlee, like we have. We've met with her personally, Brownlee, went to Katie Hall's Town Hall meeting and spoke about 5G, asking her how she could help us. So we would like you to also write letters, like the City of Westlake did, on behalf of their citizens, asking for their help. To please, for the last three and a half months, we've been asking to please stop this launch of the antennas and towers that are going to affect our ways of life in this real estate showing property value loss, as we told, peer-reviewed studies for health and environmental impacts. So whether you believe it or not, the antennas, whether they're safe or not, your residents need to be informed. By sitting silent without any public education makes it look like you don't care about the people, but I really feel like you do because you're in a position of leadership that you were chosen to help people. So I just want to say, as we, as people have told me, well, perception is reality and silence means a lot. So the people, as we go to door-to-door knocking, to farmers' markets, to Trader Joe's standing and passing out the flyers, that's what the people are saying. Where are our leaders? Why aren't we being informed? And when they find out and they're upset, they want to know what can they do to get involved. They're not public speakers, they're nervous to come out. We get petitions, but they want to know where the leaders can help them, which going to Congress is a big deal. Three teachers, four students were just, have been battling cancer. Two preschool-aged children have also been diagnosed with a tumor and leukemia from Ripon Elementary School in California. It's been in the news the last month. A number of studies have concluded that this electromagnetic field, most prominently 5G radio waves, can cause cancer. In the Netherlands recently, over 297 starling birds fell from the sky in a park with as many, many people witnessing it on video and pictures. And across the street was because they were testing a 5G mast when they did the test almost exact same time the birds fell from the sky. Ducks acted oddly and all put their heads underwater to escape the radiation. In Switzerland also, a complete herd of cows collapsed when the 5G was tested. The High Court in Bangladesh issued on April 25 that all 11 district points to stop any more launching of cell towers after 35,000 have been in their country. And they want to submit, they've submitted a feasibility study report for four months on the impact of radiation from towers on people and the environment. I would like this city to at least hire an independent radio frequency engineer like Berkeley, Burbank, and Davis have to monitor the radiation levels of current and future cell towers. Attorney Daphne Tokhavardv initiated and won a case in Israel against the, against the government to remove all Wi-Fi in schools and replace with wired network, leading to strict limitations on Wi-Fi use in schools worldwide. She speaks about the health impacts from the exposure to wireless radiation and has offered to speak to all of you, and she will--
Thank you.
--meet with you personally, even. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike King, and I'm speaking on 5G as well. And thank you for the opportunity. Everyone has one of these, right? Right here? This puts off an electromagnetic frequency, and as you know, our bodies are electrically, works in electrical charges. And when you put this, I would advise people not to put this like this when you're calling, this is off, by the way, to put this on your ear when you're talking because it actually is a biodisruptor. Okay? So when I find out, found out that 5G was happening, it was disturbing because I have two children and a light, my, outside my house is a light pole. And on, I'm assuming that most of these are going to be installed on light poles outside of houses. So pretty much everyone in here is going to have a quote-unquote "cell tower" outside of their house. And my kids' rooms are in the front of my house. So I really don't want to be sleeping or spending a lot of time right next to a cell tower. So is 5G safe? The FCC says that there's been no safety studies on 5G. They do quote the 1970s safety standards, which are electrical engineering standards on the heating of the skin. There's plenty of peer-reviewed studies that show the biodisruption with electromagnetic frequency. Also, this is, that frequency has been classified as a carcinogen by the World Health Organization. So what I'm holding in my hand is actually in question and has been classified as a carcinogen. And 5G is just a more powerful frequency than this. So in conclusion, I just would hope that you look at this real close because each and every one of us is going to be sleeping less than probably 200 feet from a cellphone tower. And that is not a good thing, less doing more safety studies. So we just recommend that you look at everything and try to get it as far away from neighborhoods as possible. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, the next three speakers I have is Judy Bruce, Barbara Hope, and Mary Lou Florian.
Before I get into my comment, I just wanted to enter in for public record. We did a call test and to determine proof that there's no significant gap in Simi Valley. We had originally did four, we added six more locations where conceivably proposed sites would be. And we took an AT&amp;T phone and a Verizon phone, we had a meter, and we made a phone call at every place. So we have proof that there's no significant gap in coverage. And we've submitted a YouTube, you can see the video as well. Because you've all signed up to be a servant to the people of Simi Valley, we trust that you will revisit your wireless ordinance and put great effort into protecting the health and welfare of your town's residents and the environment. In the absence of an outright moratorium, we ask that you write a brutally protective policy. This includes prohibiting and putting strict setbacks where we learn, live, and play. Distance is our friend. The law of inverse square, farther away these radiation and mini antennas, the better. Your decision today will affect our children and our future generations. Many of us grew up in an environment with much less radiation than exists today. Today's kids are not so lucky. They are growing up in an environment with hundreds of thousands of times higher radio frequency exposure than existed 20 years ago. Exposures to carcinogens during the early stages of life are at greater risk. I think you've heard this, they absorb much more radio frequency radiation than adults because their cells are rapidly dividing and organ systems are developing. And we've also learned from the National Toxicology Study that the radio frequency promotes tumors caused by other carcinogens. So this supports other studies that shows this radio, radiation impacts various toxins when exposures occur together. So some diagnosed with Lyme disease, an Epstein-Barr, can attest to this. And so because we're talking about living 24/7 near the millimeter antennas, we're likely to see an increase in the number of people that have these diseases. So this should be sufficient argument to reduce and halt this exposure as much as possible. The industry and the industry-captured FCC are force-feeding us to proliferate these antennas that are holding these 4G and 5G sprinkled in for show. The moral issue is 5G is indeed here and crying out to find a wiser path. So let's heed the call, protect our kids and future generations. And there are many towns with tough and evolving ordinances, you have the benefit of cherry-picking the very best. I would also suggest you incorporate changes into modification applications and small-cell wireless applications to make them work hard for what they're asking for. As a telecom attorney stated, he said, "Aware and beware." Not every project you receive from an applicant marked as small wireless facility project is likely--
Thank you.
--to act and be a small wireless.
Gee, time's up. Thank you very much.
Hello. You'll find that you each have a handout on an article about cell phones and teenagers. I just want you to know that I gave you four pages of the article because it explains certain things, and they're not consecutive, but I just selected the most important points. And it exactly explains how radiation causes cancer from cell phones in a very simple way. So I think that this is very good for you to have. I want to talk about my pictures and my poster here. First of all, that's my little niece about 14 years ago. Anyway, little baby, little girl here. This little girl is protected from Wi-Fi in, again, Israel, France, Russia. No Wi-Fi is allowed in her school. This little boy is protected from Wi-Fi, but not in the United States because these countries know how damaging Wi-Fi is to children. Here's our little animal, Sparky. Sparky's going to walk by that cellphone tower and he's going to play in the yard, and our animals get cancer too. These children are going to be strolling by, ladies and gentlemen, strolling by these cell towers. The first families of the United States are the families of our president, our president's wife, right, and their children. I say that we need the first families of experimentation. And what I mean by that is the owners of cellphone companies and the people that are going to place the cellphone towers, they need to be the first families of experimentation. Let them take five cellphone towers, put them, no, no farther than 50 feet from their homes and live for 10 years, and then come to us. And let them then tell us what happened with their families. But they, how dare they ask us to be their experiment? And the other important thing I want to say is, you know, it's already been documented that this radiation causes cancer, and we must, we must adopt the precautionary principle. It states, "If a threat of serious or irreversible damage to the environment or human health exists, a lack of full scientific knowledge about the situation should not be allowed to delay the protection or the containment of that risk." We should contain the risk no matter what, halt the project, and in this case, not install cellphone towers in our neighborhoods. I cannot understand why, with all the literature we've given you, and me personally, with the 11 articles I gave you before, why you would not say no, why you would want to align with these cellphone companies. They only care about money and more. They only care about greed, they don't care about us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry, I am talking about 5G, and I know you're sick and tired of this, but it is a really big deal. City of Mill Valley, California, has blocked the 5G cell towers from implementation. The city there voted unanimously to effectively stop the installation of new small-cell towers which carry the 5G. They enacted an emergency ordinance after it received over 100 letters from concerned citizens expressing their worries over the new cell towers. These health concerns are real. The, in Germany, scientists studied tree damage in relation to electromagnetic radiation for nine years, from 2006 to 2015. They monitored-- tower and the opposite side. The trees in low radiation had no damage. Another study was done on November 5th, as she was explaining about the birds that died. This was just an experiment they did in the Netherlands to see the connection between that and the railway stations, if there was any damage or danger. And indeed, there was. Immediately afterwards, birds fell dead from the trees, and the nearby ducks that were swimming seemed to react very oddly as well. And they were simultaneously putting their heads underwater to escape the radiation while others flew away. None of these studies were in the mainstream media. So, if 5G is capable of harming trees and birds, what could this do to humans? Why are we willing to take this risk? I personally would love to understand, from each one of your point of views, how the pros of 5G outweigh the cons because I don't get it. I, I don't understand, and I would love to. Saying no to 5G seems logical, reasonable. I urge you, each one of you, to do the right thing. Keeping our residents safe is the number-one priority. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. The next speakers we have, Charlene Hagan, Stephanie Sellers, and Brad Austin.
I'm approaching you today. I'm Charlene Hagan, and I want you to put a human face on what's going on here. I have six great-grandchildren. Four of them were preemies. They were kept in the neonatal ICU for a month. Those nurses worked so hard to keep those children healthy, they came home with no issues. And it breaks my heart to think that a 5G tower could be put on a tower right by their home and that they could be affected, and all the good work that these nurses did to save these little babies is going to be taken away. Also, my daughter-in-law, who had a liver transplant, for five years, she underwent procedures, all kinds of tests, and suffered greatly with this disease. When she received her transplant, it took nine months to recover. It's quite a surgery. She is in perfect health, and it breaks my heart to think that a tower could take that health away from her after all she has endured. It isn't fair. I ask Ruth, Huma, DeeDee, Brian, Keith, Juanne, Elaine, and Mike, please take this under consideration and put a human face on this tragedy that's going to come down on our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, city. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have with me a letter from the mayor of Westlake Village, addressed to Senator Dianne Feinstein, Senator Kamala Harris, and Congresswoman Julia Brownlee. It's regarding the FCC Commission Declaration ruling and the third report and order. Dear Senator Feinstein, Senator Harris, and Congresswoman Brownlee, I write on behalf of Westlake Village City Council to request your assistance in obtaining congressional relief for local governments for the declaratory ruling and the third report and order adopted by the FCC on September 26, 2018. As you are likely aware, in an effort to promote the deployment of 5G technology, the report and order sustainably impairs the longstanding authority of city and county officials to control the use of public property and preserve community aesthetics. First, the report and order commandeers municipal infrastructure by giving wireless providers a right to attach equipment to streetlights, city poles, and other structures and public's rights of way. In return, cities and counties are limited to charging the actual cost of processing applications administering right-of-way permits, subject to maximum amounts presumed reasonable by the FCC. Moreover, cities and counties must expedite these encroachments onto municipal property. The FCC has mandated that applications by wireless providers must be reviewed for completeness within 10 days and must be approved or denied within 60, which it's very difficult to get anything done in that amount of time for any sort of building. Anyway, these deadlines are arbitrary, and given the inevitable flood of applications, compliance may be difficult for jurisdictions with a small number of employees. Second, the report and order effectively exempts wireless providers from meaningful aesthetic regulation. The so-called small wireless facilities covered by the report and order in fact can be quite bulky and visually imposing because the FCC has entitled them to be up to 28 cubic feet in volume, including antennas up to 3 cubic feet in volume. That can extend beyond existing structures up to the greater of 50 feet or 10%. Moreover, under the FCC's decrees, cities and counties may only impose aesthetic regulations that are objective, published in advance, and no more burdensome than those that apply to other types of infrastructure installations. These limitations unquestionably will increase urban blight. The dictates of the order and report are of particular concern to the city of Westlake Village. We currently have a dozen full-time employees, and most of them have no role in the processing of applications for wireless facilities. Further, Westlake Village is a planned community where great care and thoughtful design of infrastructure engineering, including buried utilities, is a hallmark. Quite simply, the wireless industry's interest in the 0.5G bolt-on utility does not outweigh the interests of Westlake Village property owners and businesses that have invested heavily in our planned community, where aesthetics are achieved by engineering are of paramount concern. In short, the report, and there's one more paragraph, you'll just indulge me. In short, the report and order has caused substantial outcry in our community. Westlake Village residents are extremely concerned about the adverse effect it has had on our city with the, in the country, country, and about our federal government's unwarranted encroachment upon local control. Our residents are voters, and they are acutely aware that the report and order was accomplished administratively, not through the legislative process, and not with express authorization from Congress. They consider it to be--
That's good, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we'd like to have a copy of that letter.
Good evening, mayor and city council of Simi Valley. My name is Brad Austin. I have been a resident of Simi Valley for about 51 years now. Broke in Santa Paula, moved to Simi Valley, got married, raised our children here in Simi Valley. I'm an IT professional. I've been doing IT and IS, started out called MIS back in the mid-'80s. I've done a lot of things in that field. I am not an expert on telecom and what we're going to be discussing today. I have worked in the field. I've worked in satellite communications, setting up translog and translate between Honolulu, Hawaii, and Westlake, California for the company I moved to Hawaii for on a job. So, I have a little exposure to the industry. But I do want to talk about what I think that maybe we should collectively as a trusted partner in this. I think perhaps what I'd like to talk about is that this technology is nothing more or less than a technological upgrade to an existing 4G technology. It is the next generation, the next version of Wi-Fi and mobility device communication and connection. I think we know that. So, I'd like to address it from an IT. I'm a project manager for many, many years, and I would like to basically focus on what we can do, right, with this technology and obviously reach out and work with each and every one of you to figure out what you can do from your control. I think it's important that we basically look at this from a technology in use, and a strategy needs to be built that will be meaningful, manageable, and measurable to address the deployment of this solution. Also, we must think and act within the legal framework, obviously, right? But four things I want us to really think about. What are we in control of? What we are not in control of? What we can mitigate for those things that we are not in control of? And obviously, we need to do this with determination and steadfastness. Our measures need to incorporate monitoring, controlling aspects to this new technology in order to align with the meaningful aspect of quality of life that it must support in this deployment and application in the city. We need to approach this upgrade. The deployment of this new technology is, what is the benefit to us? And what is the quality of life that as a consumer of this technology, we are to reap? We've heard about potential health, the confirming and disconfirming aspects of health issues that can definitely arise from this, also of property values. I implore each and every one of you to think about, what is the quality of life that this technology is truly going to provide us? One last comment, if I may. We live in a beautiful county. My grandparents worked on the Limonera Ranch in Santa Paula in the 1940s. My grandmother was a sorter in the packing house, and my grandfather worked the insect year to raise ladybugs that would release into the orchards and actually eat the aphids on the blossoms. We live in an economy, an agriculture economy in this county. Let us also think of the big picture here, the pollinators, the beautiful orchards that we have, and it truly is of value to us as citizens of this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and city council members, that was the last speaker. The next item on the agenda is City Council, to be, City Council Board Member Special District Comments Regarding the Public Statements. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Lipster.
I would like to respond to the nine speakers that we just heard and appreciate that you would come down today and take the time. We've talked about this before. Obviously, we are monitoring legally what actions we have, and obviously, we did an emergency ordinance trying to allow, to approach this issue on an aesthetic level, which is the one area we're allowed to do. But we are very concerned, of course, as you are. We want to be sure this is safe for our community. We live in this community with you, as, as, as do you. I wanted to first address Paige Nielsen, say thank you. You made the suggestion about the letter that Westlake wrote. I'm sure that we might consider it, or I would say that I would consider it as a possibility for us as well. Certainly, we want to be sure that, that what is being, what we are being told to, what ordinances we are told, we are allowed to do are truly in the best interest of our community. And so, I was going to ask for a copy of the letter. I'm glad that the mayor did so, so we can look at that as a possible model. As, as Paige was speaking, I was actually thinking, in my letter, I might, if I were to write the letter, I might ask for some consideration of testing being part of FCC's requirements. And it's because I think that that is imperative, obviously, that whenever you have new products, obviously, that's part of it. So, anyway, just suggesting, just speaking for myself, that we are hearing you, we are, we know that you're concerned, we have concerns as well, and we are mindful of them. So, that's all I wanted to share. I'm not advocating anything right now. I know that's not the time to do so, but I'm just sharing my opinion. Thank you.
Councilmember Lou Avonos.
Thank you, mayor. I want to thank you. I was going to do the same thing, Lou, for a copy of the letter. This is why it's so important for us to make sure that, well, let me take a step backwards. You know, we have a very hard-working set of attorneys in our city attorney's office, and they did look at every single ordinance, and they put in exactly what you were asking for, the strictest laws, the strictest setbacks, whatever we could do within the confines of the law with which we have. Thank you for bringing forth the letter from Westlake Village. I would gladly sign on with that as well, modify to suit the needs of our city as well. I have had conversations with Congresswoman Katie Hall. I've not been able to personally meet with Congresswoman Julia Brownlee, but I have, you know, let her know this is a concern of our city, as it is for many, many, many cities. We are advocating, we are part of the League of Cities that has filed suit. We are following it closely. Our legal counsel is following it closely to see what the outcome will be of that. And I thank those of you who took the time to go and reach out to our congresswomen and to our senators and let them know how you feel. They very much listen to constituents, as do we, and take your concerns into consideration. So, I thank you for being advocates and being active residents and civic participants in our democracy. That's what this is about. So, thank you.
Mike? Nothing? Okay. From myself, I've been advised that we have sent a letter about a year ago to Senator Feinstein and a very similar letter to what we heard tonight, but that doesn't mean we can't review that letter and see what we've gained and take a look at the letter from Westlake and maybe compare and see if we've missed, and then send another letter. So, I appreciate you bringing that letter and reading it here this evening. And I have, I have to say, whoever, the person that wanted to take and put the kids of some other families and use them as an experiment, bad idea. Bad idea. I mean, we can disagree, but we don't need to ask other people to use their children to be guinea pigs for something. We, we're smarter than that, and we're better than that.
Okay. Thank you. And the next item on the agenda, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, is item 2C, Youth Council Comments. And Youth Council Chair Member Humna Ahmad is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. My name is Humna Ahmad, and I am a senior at Royal High School. I am currently serving my fourth consecutive term on the Youth Council. For this term, I have also had the honor of serving as the Youth Council Chair. On behalf of the Youth Council, I'll be reporting on our activities during the past month. In our final months for this term, we have been working on a series of community projects and events. We hosted a booth at the street fair on May 4th, where we promoted our community-wide talent show, as well as stress reduction techniques and other resources as part of our Mental Health Awareness Month campaign. As part of our campaign, the Youth Council voted to also promote the mental health panel I'm co-hosting at Royal High School on May 22nd at 5:00 p.m., as mentioned during the mental health awareness presentation earlier this evening. I invite you all to attend in hopes that we can all come together as a community to help friends and loved ones that may be in need now or in the future. Our community-wide talent show will be held on May 31st at the Cultural Arts Center, and I hope to see you all there, as well to support the amazing talent that lies within our city. We have so many great acts that will be performing that the audience and judges will definitely have a difficult time in choosing the top winners. We are selling discounted pre-sale tickets, $10 for adults and $5 for students with IDs. You can also purchase tickets online or at the door for $11 for adults and $6 for students. Email youthcouncil@simivalley.org to reserve your pre-sale tickets, or go to www.simi-arts.org to get your tickets online. On April 24th, we visited the Simi Valley Pet Adoption Center to present the shelter staff with the donations we collected at the youth summit. Not only do we get to tour the facility, but we got to give love to adorable animals waiting to get adopted. We also highlighted them on our Instagram page to help them get adopted. This youth council term has been a huge success with the many goals achieved. Each year, I realize how lucky I am to be a part of a city that values active youth leaders and their ideas. This year, I've seen a lot of growth in our organization with the youth summit and youth town hall. Over the last four years, I've seen both of these events evolve as great opportunities for my peers to discuss important topics and engage with leaders in our government. I can't wait to see the bigger impact the Youth Council will make in the following years. The next Simi Valley Youth Council meeting will be held on May 21st. Typically, meetings are held the first and third Tuesday of each month during the school year. Our meetings are public, so if anyone is interested, I highly encourage you to attend our meetings. And finally, I would like to thank Mayor Mashburn and the city council for allowing me to have the opportunity to speak today, as well as the Youth Council for all the wonderful opportunities that it's given me in the past years. At this time, if anyone has any-- Email youthcouncil@seamivally.org to reserve your pre-sale tickets, or go to www.seamy-arts.org to get your tickets online. On April 24th, we visited the Seamee Valley Pet Adoption Center to present the shelter staff with the donations we collected at the Youth Summit. Not only do we get to tour the facility, but we got to give love to adorable animals waiting to get adopted. We also highlighted them on our Instagram page to help them get adopted. This Youth Council term has been a huge success with the many goals achieved. Each year, I realize how lucky I am to be a part of a city that values active youth leaders and their ideas. This year, I've seen a lot of growth in our organization with the Youth Summit and Youth Town Hall. Over the last four years, I've seen both of these events evolve as great opportunities for my peers to discuss important topics and engage with leaders in our government. I can't wait to see the bigger impact the Youth Council will make in the following years. The next Seamee Valley Youth Council meeting will be held on May 21st. Typically, meetings are held the first and third Tuesday of each month during the school year. Our meetings are public, so if anyone is interested, I highly encourage you to attend our meetings. And finally, I would like to thank Mayor Mashburn and the City Council for allowing me to have the opportunity to speak today, as well as the Youth Council for all the wonderful opportunities that it's given me in the past years. At this time, if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Thank you, and have a great night.
Any questions? Humna, I have a question for you.
Yes.
I'm sorry I didn't catch. Which animal control facility did you?
The Seamee Valley Pet Adoption Center.
Is that the one out?
Yes.
On East L.A. Avenue?
Yeah.
Okay. And how did you find that facility as far as crowding and what happened?
Well, within our Youth Summit Committee, we actually have, like us members, recommend different facilities that we want to organize, because each Youth Summit, we collect donations. So, we vote on which organization we want to donate to.
Okay. But when you went out there and looked at that particular facility, how about the conditions, meaning crowding-wise? Is it overcrowded with animals, or is it acceptable, in your opinion? I know you're not an expert in that.
In my opinion, I don't think it was too overcrowded, no. Yeah.
Okay. Great.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question to you?
Sure.
Okay. I just want to make sure you're done. Is the deadline for the talent show over?
Yes.
So, you've chosen all acts. Do you know what kind of acts we can look forward to?
I'm not sure, but you have to come to find out, I guess.
Great.
And what time does it start on the 31st?
Um? Seven. Seven.
I wrote it down. I wanted to know.
Perfect. And where's the venue?
At the Cultural Arts Center. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? No?
Oh, I can't. And what high school do you have?
Royal High School.
Sorry, I had to tease the mayor.
You are a pioneer.
I like to do better.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 4, the Consent Calendar.
Anybody have anything they would like polled?
I request to poll Item 1 from the consent calendar. I'd like to abstain, because I was not here as a council member yet.
Say that again, please.
I'd like to poll Item 1.
Yeah.
Because I would like to abstain, because I was not a council member when that happened.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just had a question on Item 4.
So, do you want to poll 4?
Yes, please.
Let's do that. Okay. So, let's start with number 1, and we'll ask the question, see if we need to change the order of vote.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to abstain from voting on it, since I was not a council member when that meeting happened.
Okay.
I was here, but not as a council member.
I get it. I'm sorry. Okay, 4?
Same here.
On 4, I just had a question. I wasn't quite sure on what the funds can be used for and what they cannot, but one of the recipients filed and used some expenses for trademarking their actual workbook. I didn't know if that was something that could be used for that budget.
Do we have a member from staff that can answer the questions? Huh? Okay, she comes.
Sorry, I know it's kind of an off-the-wall question.
Good evening. No problem. I don't know specifically off of my recall which organization that is, but we do compare these to the scopes of work that they submitted. So, provided that it falls within the general umbrella of what the council approved when the funds were awarded, then it's considered to be a permissible activity, as long as it's a direct expense. So, if you want to tell me exactly which organization it is, I can...
My kaleidoscope, and their first charge, or their first expense is trademarking workbook material. It was $292. I just don't know, I haven't really seen that type of item before.
Yeah, and if you would like, we could get additional clarification on that.
If you can just double-check that when the staff time, no problem. That's it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Can I add that? I had the same question, and then when I looked at the others, like I see one for fees, miscellaneous program expenses, then I kind of went, well, that's kind of a pretty wide catch-all, so that's why I decided not to ask the question. But if maybe clarification down the road...
I'd be happy to get clarification on both of those, and what we could do is, if you still want to receive and file the reports tonight, what we can do is clarify those expenses, or if there are any concerns at the staff level, we can ask those organizations to back out those expenses and apply them to a more direct expense under their existing scope of work, and we'll report on those in the fourth quarter report, if that pleases the council.
I'm fine on filing this, just with a little bit more explanation.
Okay, so we'll leave 4 on the consent calendar.
But can I ask a couple of questions about 4, since you pulled it?
Sure.
Just because I was curious, since it was pulled. I noticed that two agencies have quite a bit of outstanding funds still available, and I understand the deadline is June 1st for them to, at least it's stated, to expend all of their resources. That's what's stated in the application.
June 30th, through the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, June 30th. Okay. Thank you. But I noticed, for instance, like in the free clinics application, they mentioned that they received the funds in November, which is why they were delayed in using those funds, or at least that's why the first quarter was so small. And I don't know if they think then that means they can go until, I'm just wondering if they're, if they're possibly confused that they think they have from the date of receipt to, I mean, is there a way of, do you, I guess I'm asking, do you go and say, listen, you've got one, two months left, and you've got to spend it, or, I mean, what? Or do we ever give them?
So, we do, so we do a number of preemptive measures to ensure that each of the organizations are completing their scope of work and exhausting all the funds within the permissible time period. So, if you look on the actual report, there's actually a box that says, checking this box.
Right. I noticed they checked them.
So, we implemented that, because we did have, in a prior year, one organization not be able to fully expend all of their funds, and they had to return them to the city pursuant to their contract that's executed. Independently, we have been reaching out to each of the organizations that have a substantial amount remaining to remind them and to follow up with them, and should any of them not be able to complete the projects by June 30th, the funds will be returned to the city and then eligible for allocation in a future award cycle.
Okay.
So, we do proactively work with them, because we look at the same thing. I think with regards to the free clinics report...
It was actually September. I misquoted, I'm sorry.
September. So, there is, depending on the scope of work that they submitted with their initial application, and then the final dollar amount that they receive, sometimes the scopes of work need some modification before we can execute the contracts to make it match the dollar amount. And then additionally, it takes time to process the checks through the city's finance processes and those types of things. So, sometimes there is a small delay in getting the funding to some of the organizations. So, I think what they were trying to note is just that theirs is directly related to a staff position, so they didn't hire until they had the cash on hand for that position. So, they will, they've indicated that they plan to fully exhaust the funding during the permissible time period.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, need a motion for Consent 1. We'll do it separately.
I'm moved to approve Consent Item Number 1.
Second. Call for the vote.
Motion passes by 3, and Councilmember Lou Evinos and Councilmember Littler abstain.
Okay, and then we will need a motion for Consent 2 through 6.
Move Consent 2 through 6 for approval.
Second.
Call for the vote.
All right. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, there's the next item on the agenda, Item 5, informational presentations. Item 5-1, Presentation Recapping the City Launch Conference and Smart City Concepts, and the city's, and the city's new Administrative Services Director, Joseph Tony, is here for this presentation.
Mayor Mashburn and members of the City Council, today's presentation is highlighting the City Launch Conference in March 2019 in San Diego, California. The conference explores technology and innovation in local government and what cities are already doing. Administrative Services Deputy Director Gary Boswell attended the conference and will be giving today's presentation.
Give me a second to set up, because my notes are on the slides. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Gary Boswell. I'm the Deputy Director of Administrative Services. I am the highest person in information systems for the city, so I'm kind of the head IT guy. What I'd like to talk to you about tonight is smart cities and technology in general. So, I've got a bunch of slides. I'm going to talk about how it's going to impact the city, how technology is changing the world that we live in, and that every device is getting smaller and more connected. Some insights into a conference that I attended in March, explain what a smart city is, explain why the network is key to all of this, and where other cities are headed, where the private sector is headed, and where they are now, and then, of course, where Seamee Valley is and where we're headed. So, the first thing that we need to talk about it really is, what is a smart city? A smart city is really a designation given to a city that incorporates technology and communications technologies to enhance the quality and performance of services that they provide, energy, transportation, utilities, with the goal to reduce consumption, waste, and overall costs. A smart city is a sustainable city, and a sustainable city is a smart city. Some definitions that are out there is IOT, which is Internet of Things. You're going to be hearing that a lot more as time goes on, if you're not already familiar with the term. And really, what it is, is everything is becoming connected to the Internet, and every, and there's a lot of things, there are just sensors out there, and they're called the Internet of Things. There's cameras, there's lights, there's utility meters, there's smart refrigerators, smart microwave ovens. All of these things are considered the Internet of Things, and everything being connected to the network is kind of what the Internet of Things is all about. 5G and 5th generation wireless. Broadband right now is described as, by the FCC, is 25 megs per minute download. 5G is actually 500 times that speed. Broadband is high-speed Internet access. Typically, when people talk about broadband, they usually mean fiber in the city. A lot of the broadband that we actually have is through spectrum, and it's across the coax TV cable is actually what that one's off of. Smart sensors, and these are devices that take input from the physical environment. There's a lot of sensors that are out there, and a lot of cities are using them. They detect light and heat and smoke, and send stuff back to a centralized computer or alarm, so places can make some decisions as far as those types of things. Gunshot warnings are actually one of the things that's pretty power, pretty widely used inside of inner cities. One of the things that is, is the network is key, is that smart cities will rely on a smart network. Smart network's going to be a combination of both fiber as well as wireless. The network's got to be secure, it's got to be stable, and it has to be resilient to failure. Over five, over the last 20 years, the number of devices has increased by 500%, and this will continue. The other thing that's out there is, I know there's, you know, talking about wireless and 5G, is that the first generation, 5G is just 5th generation, the first generation to the fifth generation is 15,000 times faster. So, 20 years ago, when we were on 1G, it was quite a bit smaller than it is now, and quite a bit faster, and what we have now is quite a bit faster, and it's only going to get more, going to get faster. Where cities are headed, so I went to the City Launch Conference, it was down in San Diego, and there was quite a few other cities that were down there. They had a lot of presentations from, everything from Santa Monica had a long discussion, the city of Tula Vista talked about it, and then there were some just general, overall things. The big things that I walked away from is that there's a lot of sensors out there that are available. There's gunshot sensors, there's our quality sensors, there's smart streetlights that turn on and off when they sense a car's driving down the street. There's smart utility meters, which means that you can read a meter at any time during the day. You don't need to send somebody out to read the numbers off the dial or even drive past it. It's all done through a wireless network. Lot of video in public areas. The gentleman down from Santa Monica went into detail as far as that, and the number of cameras that they have, and the surveillance that they have going on for public safety in public areas is quite amazing. Drones as first responders. This was actually very interesting, because there's a lot of talk about drones out there from a public safety standpoint, and I know that the police here have mentioned things to me before in the past, as far as what my thought on it was. They had a very interesting presentation. The city of Tula Vista actually got a grant, I can't remember what the, how much it was for, but it was in the millions of dollars. They dedicated 12 officers, and they have a whole thing that is geared towards making it so that before they dispatch a cop car, they fly a drone out. One of the most interesting things that I saw at that conference was, they had a guy that was going to commit suicide by cop, and he was walking around with a gun in a park, and they flew the drone over, the cops drove up behind bushes and were looking on their iPhone down at the guy as he was walking around through the park. Finally, the guy tosses his gun away and goes walking up towards the street, and the police officers were able to apprehend him and take him into custody, because he was unarmed, and there was, you know, it was very interesting, because it could have been a very, very bad situation if they would have walked upon him and he had the gun out, they could have shot him, he could have shot them, but it was all, you know, averted, because they were able to see it before they got there, so. Santa Monica, on the other hand, is not Seamee Valley, and has a lot of things that we don't really care about, and I don't know if we ever will. I've lived in Seamee for a long time, so I'm saying this from my own perspective, is in Santa Monica, they've got an app that will tell you where the nearest parking spot is, where the nearest coffee shop is, where the nearest bird scooter is. Some of those things may come to Seamee, but I don't know, I don't really see that's where we're heading. There are other things that smart cities are doing that are applicable towards us, but a lot of the things that Santa Monica was doing are very cutting-edge and very interesting, but it's a different demographic. They have a lot of tourism there, and a lot of, you know, people walking around in the streets at night, and they use it a lot for public safety as well. One of the things that I personally think is going to change kind of the whole face of where things are headed is e-healthcare. And right now, we spend a lot of money, you know, it's a 7% of the economy in the US on healthcare, and there's doctor's visits and driving to the doctor and getting prescriptions and all of that stuff. That stuff's all going to change here in the not-too-distant future, and everybody, it's going to be starting to happen via web conferences, and the doctors may not even be in your town. They might not even be in the same country, and it's going to dramatically reduce the cost of healthcare, which is, I think, a good thing for the country. When they get to the spot where it's easy to do the video conferencing and they're able to diagnose people that way, it's going to change quite a few things. I've got a father-in-law that lives here in Seamee, and he's always complaining about the doctors, and he's not a real technophobe, but he's not scared of it either, and we've had conversations on, yeah, I wish, you know, at 2:00 in the afternoon, I didn't have to drag my tailbone down to see the doctor and show them the latest ailment, so. Online education and learning is also going to be one. It's the same kind of thing, is when I started in IT, we used to send people off to training, you know, for three, five days at a time, and they'd, you know, have to spend the night in hotel and be in San Jose to learn the latest technology. We don't do that anymore. Very, very rarely do we send somebody to training. It's usually done via GoToMeeting or WebEx or one of those kind of things. That has changed, and I think it's going to actually trickle down more into the K through 12, as well as colleges. Some of the big changes that are happening in the private sector is you can now go to Phoenix or Las Vegas, and if you're there and you go to call an Uber, you can get a driverless car. They will, a car will come up to you without a driver in it, and it will take you to where you want to go. It's, I don't want to say it's coming, it's here, and within the next 10 years, it's going to change quite a few things as well. There's going to be, there's a big push for driverless long-haul trucks, and it's going to change the trucking industry. One of the things that I see is transportation as a service, and people aren't going to own cars anymore. that's actually gonna be the turning point. And depending on who you talk to, and the people at the conference said, that may be three years in some cities. It may be five years in others. Most of the people said that within the next 10 years, most of the vehicles on the streets will be driverless. And these little, you won't own them anymore. It's gonna change life quite a bit. It's going to reduce traffic congestion, because these things all know where the other cars are, and they can zip along at 65 miles an hour on the freeway, and they won't slow down, or if, you know, if, because they just don't have to. And there's, they are, they're all connected, and they all know about each other. So, it's quite a bit different than the, than the traffic patterns we're gonna see. The malls are gonna change. If you think about it, and you go shopping, you no longer need to park there, because you're gonna be, you know, taxied there and taxied home. There's no parking at the malls. There's going to be, you know, more people commuting and getting more, you know, freedom as far as they go, because they're not gonna have to worry about cars. Some of the other changes that are happening in the private sector is targeted advertising. We all have our phones, and I think everybody gets annoyed at a minute. Yeah, I was looking for a barbecue three days ago, and now I'm seeing ads for a barbecue. It's going to get worse. If you go to a CVS back east, I believe it's in Tennessee, they have a whole district of them that are, they basically profile people. You walk through the door, it looks at me, says 50-year-old male. It puts an ad up on the screen for Grecian formula. You know, walk, as I'm walking over there, it knows that there's, you know, that I like Diet Coke, and it shows the Diet Coke display. It actually, they're changing a lot of things, too. Is that the glass doors in front of the soda displays aren't glass doors inside of the city. They're actually TV screens. There's a camera there, and it watches your eyes as you look at Coke versus Pepsi versus this other thing. You open up the door, of course, you get a Coke out of it, but it's tracking what you're doing. It's kinda creepy in some respects. But that stuff's just gonna get more and more pervasive. And they're going to get to the point where they know that you walked in, who you are, because you have your phone, and it's gonna talk to the CVS app, that's gonna know that you're inside of there, and it's gonna pop up and show you something that, you know, that you wanna buy, and the latest stats on the phone as well. Robots, artificial intelligence, and automation. So, this is actually one of those things that nobody really knows where it's going, and there's a lot of scary stories out there. Robots are gonna take over the world. It's really hard to say. There is gonna be displacement, and life is gonna change. I'm kind of an optimistic, I think, I think it's gonna be for the better. But to give you a big example is, by the end of August of this year, the MGM in Vegas is not gonna have any bartenders. And if you think about this, they've got 200 bartenders that are working there at any given time, and they have four shifts a day. And bartending is actually a pretty lucrative position, because you get a lot of tips. These people are making a hundred grand a year. That's all going away. They're gonna, they're gonna have the automated arms that do this and talk to you, as well as having slushy machines where you can order your drinks out of. And it's gonna displace those people. And being a bartender in Vegas, is, what did those people do? That was actually discussed as part of the conference in San Diego, and how is it gonna change their lives and stuff like that? There wasn't any good answer. The consensus that I have, or my thought on it is, you know, there's going to be different work for people as things, and things are gonna change, because things have already changed. You know, driverless cars, and where that's all heading is, it's gonna make a big change for the youth as well as the elderly. In Simi Valley, you know, the population here is getting older, and there's a lot of people that we're gonna get to an age that they're not gonna be able to drive, DMV's not gonna give them licenses. They're still gonna be able to get around. They'll call one of these little smart things, I mean, they can call Ubers now. I'm trying to talk my father-in-law into just going, carless and using an Uber every place he goes. Because, you know, they can. And if they don't have a way to get around now, it's gonna make it so that they can get around, and can go to the store, and can go to doctor's appointments, and do those types of things, or go to the senior center. Same with youth. And, you know, people underneath, under 16, they don't have cars, but there's actually a lot of people that are sending their kids around in Ubers now. It's actually pretty popular in the valley for some of the schools to, for those key-locked kids that come home after school, and they're both working nine-to-five jobs. Parents are sending them home in Ubers. Another one is, it's gonna change the way products are delivered. Some of you may be aware, Amazon actually has licenses with the FCC to fly drones, and to put up places in towns and have distribution centers, where they're gonna have these little drones, pick them up, fly them to your house, and drop them off. It's gonna change quite a bit, the world quite a bit, too, because, you know, there's people driving those vans around right now, and what are they gonna do? There's kind of the weird thing of this drones flying over your head, because they're not quiet, and they're gonna be landing packages in your front yard. And what happens when they fail, and they fall out of the sky, and they, you know, somebody's delivery ends up in the center of the freeway? I'm sure they're gonna overcome a lot of those issues as they roll it out, but there's going to be some interesting things as we go through that. So, what is Simi doing? We have a couple of projects that are underway. We're doing smart water meters. I kind of alluded to that. Is, what this really means is that it used to be that we would send people around to each one of the water meters. They would open up the cover, they would look at the dials, they would write down the numbers in a notepad for the water meter is, go to the next place. A few years back, I'm not quite sure how many, eight, 10 years ago now, they replaced a lot of the water meters with one where now they just drive by in a van, and they pick up the water meters, and it's in a handheld that they have. There's actually kind of Wi-Fi type radios on a lot of the water tanks that we have now, and it covers about 85% of the city. And they can, in real time, pull up everybody's water meter and look at it. And the beauty of that is, they can look at things such as leak detection. And they can look at my house, or look at a bunch of houses, and say, okay, this is what the average looks like through the day. This one house, at 3:00 in the afternoon, it spiked, and it started using a lot of water, and that went on till 5:00, and then, you know, it slowed down and went back to the normal. And they can let me know, and so that we can check things at our house to see if there's issues with, you know, our sprinklers going off, or some abnormal patterns and stuff. We're pretty close as far as that goes. Going back to one of my things that I'd said before, is the network is key. That's what we're missing. There's 15% of the city that we can't get to, some of those radio towers that we have out there. They are working on them, and they're gonna get closer. That's not my project, so I'm not real sure how close, how close it is, but I know the base technology is there and up and running. We've replaced our streetlights with LED streetlights. Most of you were involved in those decisions there. The smart buildings. Over the last few years, we've done quite a few retrofits to the buildings. We've installed solar panels, we've installed LED lights above our heads. We put in smart charging stations, we put in smart air conditioners. One of these things is, or all these things is, they came along, every time that they do, it seems like, oh, I need to plug them in the network, we need to get them hooked up, we need to make sure that, you know, that we can monitor them, stuff like that. It seems like every project that having to do with the buildings anymore, they're all on the network. We are, I think, you know, working towards very green stuff, and as far as the buildings go, and it is good. There's ability to do a private partnership for free Wi-Fi. Looked into that, I maybe bring something back to the council. I'm still waiting to get some of the paperwork figured out, that they have as far as the contract. There's a couple of hitches with it. It's free if you're a Spectrum color customer. If you're not a Spectrum customer, then they charge you after a certain amount of time. And Lonnie and I have had some preliminary discussions on it, but I need to go through and push that one through. Joe and I, and Brian Gabler have talked about exploring a public wireless network, possibly on Cochrane between Sycamore and Galena, in the little mall there, and where the, and kind of blanketing that, and doing that as a test. I've had some conversations with the guys in Public Works, and what it would take to put the Wi-Fi devices up on the streetlights, now that we own the streetlights, we can actually use those to build our own network. The other big projects that we've got going on, we're upgrading our systems. We're in, I wanna say, getting towards the tail end of our ERP, which is an enterprise resource planning, think of accounting system on steroids. It's got utility billing as well, and planning and permitting, and being able to do field inspections using iPads, being able, for Public Works, for code enforcement, building and safety. That stuff's, we own the software, we're in the center of implementing it. I've done some tests with some of the stuff for utility billing, and for turning on and off work orders for the people. So, when your water gets turned off, right now, they've got a piece of paper. And the process they use is very convoluted, to say the least. They're just, they're gonna have an iPad, and they're gonna get all of this stuff, shows a map, says what they're supposed to do. They click a couple buttons when they do it, they do a meter reading, it all sets back in the system. It's gonna make their lives quite a bit simpler for the people in the field for doing that work. Same with code enforcement, actually, has been on iPads for a while. They're going to be going to the new system, as well as all the building inspections and the Public Works inspections. Stuff's all a very paper-based process. We have the foundation in place for the ERP, and it's been up and running for a couple of years, and we're just now starting to get the systems that are more public-facing, if you will. Police Department has quite a bit of technology. They've had, actually had computers in their cars for longer than any city in Ventura County. They have the ability to write reports, search databases, look for bad people, look at license plates, look at warrants. It's been a very effective tool for it. They've been very happy with it. The entire system that they have is pretty sophisticated. There's actually worries inside of my own, my own group, because I've got a couple of people that used to work in the Police Department, and they're afraid, because they're now so reliant on the computers, if something were to happen and the computers were to go down, you know, how they would actually respond to that. We've got good systems now in place, though, computers don't go down anymore, so. Later on this year, we're looking at an upgrade for the Police Department technology, their system over there. And some of the enhanced features that they have are actually the ability to use the phone to search some of those databases. So, rather than getting somebody's drivers, standing at somebody's door with the driver's license, taking it, walking back to the car, typing it in to see if the person is a felon, they're gonna be able to do that from their phone right there in front of them. I haven't seen it, the, I haven't seen it live. It's supposed to, they're supposed to be able to take a picture of the driver's license, and they don't even have to type anything in. I don't know whether they got that feature enabled in the version we're going to, though. So, as a recap, technology's changing. It's advancing around us, it's gonna continue to advance. A lot of the things I said at the City Launch Conference was, it's been changing for the last thousand years. It's just different change now. The conference was very interesting, is hearing what other cities were doing. It actually was pretty reassuring. We're not on the cutting edge, but we're not very far behind as far as a lot of the technologies. There's, you know, some of the things like the drones, that it's actually good. I think that some of these other cities are actually taking the lead on them to get the bugs out of the system, because they have had some, you know, drones fall out of the sky, and some of those things, when they were first learning how to fly them. And they've adjusted the way that their policies, and adjusted the way that they do things. So, it's actually good, there's, some of these places are, you know, bleeding edge. The changes are gonna affect not only the society, but the city, and just the nation as a whole. Going back to it is, having a secure, stable network is key to the whole thing. If you don't have a secure and stable network, none of this stuff works, so. And then, lastly, we've completed many smart city initiatives, and we're getting ready to do some more. And there's more stuff coming. Any questions?
I'm very excited you went to this conference. I got something in my email, and then I said, oh, my gosh, are we sending someone from the city? I think I went and asked Brian. One of my questions to you is, do we have, do we have IT workers who can install and maintain? You know, I always think of that scene from Charlie and the Chocolate Factory, where the dad is out of a job, because he works at a toothpaste factory, and then he gets a job fixing, because the machine does his job, and then he gets a job fixing the machine that used to do his job. So, my question is, will we be able to transition our workers so that they can be trained, so they can install and maintain all these sensors, smart meters, video? Because that's one of the ways that we can transition. Because wherever you have this technology, you need someone who's gonna be able to fix it and maintain it. So, was that a discussion that was had at all?
So, I'll give you my perspective as far, yes, they did have some things that they talked about there. My perspective as far as how that relates to the city is, there's quite a few people here at the city that are getting into the age, and they're getting ready to retire, or they actually have retired. I've been here 12 years. I think in the last two years, we've had more people retire than we've had in the 10 years before that. A lot of the newer people that are coming in to fill those jobs, they actually are laughing that we do things in paper, and they are wondering why we are doing things this way. And then there's the other ones that I've talked to that are still here, that, you know, we're now rolling out some of this technology, and they're all, they're actually happy for it. There's a little bit of a scared, it's like, I don't wanna give up my notebook, because I've got this notebook that has everything that I've done in the last 12 years. But to be able to show them that, here, this is all the stuff that you need to do for your daily job, and then all the stuff that you, you know, need to look at, that you've done historically, it's in the system. So, as far as the transitioning of the city's workforce, I'm not overly, personally, this is my own opinion, is I'm not overly concerned about it. A lot of the other cities, it really varied as far as the age of their workforce, how technically competent they were. There was a lot of factors that they discussed on it.
So, is this something we should look for in our new hires, to have this kind of background and experience?
I personally believe that, yeah, we should be looking for people that, no, some basic computer operations, and basic computer operation skills. The thing that I'm, I don't wanna say I'm amazed at, but the, most of the people that we're bringing in that are younger than myself, they actually, they know it, and actually have an expectation that it's there, so.
Okay, and my other question is, you know, can we, is there any way we can encourage, or, I know we have some STEM schools. I know, you know, my daughter goes to Hillside, which is a STEM, you know, and Santa Susana also focuses on technology as well. But is there any way, you know, that we could kind of share this knowledge so that we are preparing our youth, you know, to be able to transition? And just so you know, you know, most of my children's generation will have between seven and nine different careers. So, the career and major that my son will have, and my daughter, probably doesn't even exist yet. So, you know, I just wanna make sure that we are connecting them with, you know, what will be the future careers, and making sure that they're ready for that.
So, speaking from personal experience, this is my, I don't know, 10th place that I've worked at in the last 30 years, I believe. So, I actually, it's all been IT-related, but all of the industries have always been different. This is my first government job, and so I can kind of relate to that, not staying in a job very long, and actually having what I would consider different careers, because I worked for everything from a dot-com that was a packaging company, to a cellular company, to a place that made chips. And the things that the city's doing, and that IT's doing, is we're very involved with the Workforce Coalition. And there's a woman by the name of Mary Beth Jackson that we talk to probably quarterly, and then twice a year, we'll either go, myself and some of the people that work for me, go and give presentations, and talk about her careers, and talk about technology to the students. It's actually a pretty interesting forum. They'll set up a dinner, and there'll be 50 students, and five students at a table, and then two mentors. And basically, just talk about your career, and what you like about IT, and what's horrible about it, and give them advice, and some of those things. So, we've been very involved in that. Also, we have them, that same group has taken tours through here. The last one was just about a month and a half ago. We had, it was neat, because it was the first time that it was directed at girls. And it was girls trying to get into STEM. And it was, it was all, it was all girl classes that came through, and there was probably 25 students that we brought through, all from junior high school to high school age. about a month and a half ago, we had, it was neat, because it was the first time that it was directed at girls, and it was girls trying to get into STEM, and it was all girl classes that came through, and there was probably 25 students that we brought through, all from junior high school to high school age. And then the other thing that we're doing is that, for the first time since I've been here, actually, we're getting an intern, which I'm pretty happy about, that's a high school intern, so we're dragging him in here, and gonna work him to death over the summer, so. But it'll look good on his resume.
Okay, now, my last question. I heard, you know, I saw on the presentation where you talked about pedestrian-centric urbanism, which I love, by the way. What can we be doing as a city, so that we can move in that way? I've talked about scramble across rocks, and I've mentioned this in the past, but what can we do so that we can move in that direction, as a city?
I'll go ahead and jump in. I think the key thing is just making sure that we're up, we'll continue to keep track of the technologies that are available for cities, and how other larger urban cities utilize that technology, and see if there's an adaptability to our suburban environment. I think it's critical that we continue to understand the connectivity, as Gary said, the network is key. If you don't have a network, we can't, we can't connect anything. But if we continue to understand what's out there, and what technology is available, and how it's used, I think we find ways to adapt that to our environment.
I guess for me, because when I see that, that's really where we need to be moving, every city needs to be moving that way, given the extreme weather that we're having, what the climate change, and the extreme, you know, which is impacted by the carbon emissions and the number of vehicles that are on the road. So if we can move in that direction, it would help us not have such extreme weather, and, you know, make sure that we have a greener future, a more sustainable future for the city, and for the next generation, and future generations to come. So, that's why I'm so interested in that. And the concept of having the corridors of free Wi-Fi would only help our business community immensely, but we also need partnerships with our businesses to stay open later. I'm a teacher, it's very hard for me to find a place that's open past 9 o'clock to go do grading, which I have to do online, besides Fridays. So I'd like to go somewhere besides Fridays. But, you know, having that partnership, I think is a worthy investment, because it'll only boost our businesses, and help our local businesses, and help our business owners to have that Wi-Fi available, and to know that, you know, maybe a trade would be, you guys stay open a little bit later, and know that there are people that stay up past 9 o'clock in Simi Valley.
Just a couple of quick questions, if that's all right. You speak of the network being key, and Brian just referenced that. And actually, I passed a note to Councilman Judge, saying it was interesting that all of, that many of the presenters left, except I noticed that Brad Austin is still here, as far as who was concerned about 5G and its impact, et cetera, and yet, this very much speaks to it. And I understand the Internet of Things is 5G laden, is that correct? Runs basically on that platform?
I would say that, yeah, it's related. Yeah, they're very, the 5G is part of, even the same network that we have is part of the Internet of Things. The network is, you know, there's gonna be fiber optic cables as well as...
And that was gonna be my question, do, what are our fiber optic capabilities? What do we have right now in your knowledge? Do we...
So Brian actually brought in some vendors here, and brought in AT&amp;T, and stuff like that, and there was a report that was presented five months ago?
Back in October, yeah, we presented a report on the connectivity of Simi Valley. Actually, the entire industrial commercial area has fiber in the street, in front of all the businesses there, except for one street, and that is Chambers Lane, which continues to be a problem, but we're working with AT&amp;T to try and solve that problem. For the rest of the community, actually, there are several different wireless providers, or actually owners of fiber, that have pretty much laid out most of the city. Crown Castle happens to be one that has miles and miles of fiber throughout Simi Valley. So we're actually fairly well laid out for fiber. Now that being said, there is a need to continue to grow that, but you can't, unfortunately you can't, because of the cost of fiber, it's very expensive to do it the traditional, dig 18 feet, 18 inches down, put it in a conduit, and cover that conduit up, you have to dig up the street. Where actually, Gary and I had a recent meeting with a provider that is looking at doing microtrenching, where you go six inches down with a very small cut, and lay several layers of fiber into that, just inside the curb line. So we're working with a couple of different vendors that may be able to provide that in our community, and we continue to have those discussions. But for a community to try and fiber their community now would be very challenging and extremely expensive.
To put fiber to every building inside of the city, we are looking north of $120 million, would be my guess, and so for a private investor to come in and do that, that's a substantial chunk of change, and they're gonna want to return on their investment.
Sure.
So.
Okay, well, thank you.
I have one more question.
Yeah?
Is there any possibility, or is there any fiber optics up at our town center?
At our town center?
I think AT&amp;T does serve the town center with fiber.
Yeah.
All right. I hope you've enjoyed the program so far.
It's been fantastic. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm here to make a presentation regarding your pension liabilities. I will try to be as brief as possible. Okay, so we've kind of talked about the financial challenges, I'm sure that these have been presented to you, but basically, the perspective we want to provide is that expenses are outpacing, are outpacing revenues, that we have a declining sales tax base. I know that management is taking some efforts to fix some issues, structural deficit, and we're also looking at full cost recovery. All this and the challenge of going forward in the future, that you want to finance the CIP, the capital improvement projects that you have going forward. So, you do have some reserves, and our goal, as a financial advisor, I'm an independent financial advisor, is try to maintain your financial health and financial position. So, we're gonna do, make this presentation in light of that kind of general objective. Thanks. I think a lot of people want to ask how we've got here, I think it's a combination of factors, so much so that the League of Cities asked Bartell and Associates to put together a report on fiscal sustainability of the pension system. I'll quickly go over the five factors, which are actually listed in order of importance, per the report. The first, we've talked about the enhanced and retroactive benefits that happened in 1990, 2001, for those playing at home, that basically means that people's CalPERS formulas had been changed at that time, and they're also retroactive, so if someone retired and had been working for 19 years, they actually got that formula for their entire service credit. Investment losses, which are well documented, we've talked about the losses that most of us have personally experienced. I think it's important to note, in addition to the 30% decline in the general market, that there's a benchmark, or a target, that any investment, pension investment fund has to reach, which is about 7%, so if you take that over two years, the 30% plus the two years of the losses that they didn't meet, gets you down to a 45% decline, in essence, of market value. Cost of living adjustments, that's important to note, that if CalPERS returns 7% and you pay your annuities, or your retirees 2%, you've actually only gained a net 5%, and that makes it very difficult. And a lot of other states, by comparison, do not have these COLAs. I think it's important for the retirees, but it makes it very hard for us to meet our target. Last part is the CalPERS contribution policy, and this cannot be ignored in that, there have been a number of changes that went with this at this time. So when we were super funded in about 2000, which meant that the plan assets were 150% of the liabilities, at that time, you could not actually make a contribution. If you sent an additional contribution to CalPERS, they'd say, no, 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 keep your money. In reality, what you should be doing is making continual payments, a notion of dollar cost averaging, because the market goes up and down. This is kind of like making contributions to your 401K, or to your, in my case, college fund for my child, they should be continual and consistent. So, one last thing, the policy changes were always intended to ease the burden on employers when we made these. Unfortunately, what has happened is that we had pushed back our liabilities in the future, and now, we are facing an upward trend in our unfunded liability payments that are due, I'll explain those in a second. So, what are Simi Valley's liabilities? It's important to note that you have your liability, which you have an actuary put together, the present value of all the payments that you owe, both for the retirees, who are currently retired and still living, and employees who have earned credit to date. So they come up with a value, and you have also the market value of the assets, so the net difference is your unfunded liability. They break it up between the miscellaneous and safety plans, so in aggregate, it's $142 million, or about 69% funded. I believe right now, or actually, at the time, that actual evaluation, the state of California was about, the CalPERS fund in aggregate was 70% funded. It's important to note that each city has a different combination of employees, age, plans, and the like, so there's a range. But in general, cities are anywhere from 60 to 70%, some who have taken some kind of action are much higher funded, or in other words, they don't have much of an unfunded liability, but that's far more the exception than the case. In fact, I kind of call them the unicorns, you find one or two that are very well funded, and usually, I had one client that was 98% funded, but they were a joint powers authority, so, and they had a few employees. Your annual pension payments are comprised of two components, I'll make this kind of as basic, it's really like a utility payment, you have a current light bill, and you have a past due payment. And I want everyone to think about your UAL, your unfunded accrued liability, is like a past due payment for service that you haven't been making payments. So now what they do is that you go to Edison, and they say, great, your current monthly bill is $50, and you owe us $290, and your payment for this month to pay off that on your six-month payment plan is $50. So those are the components. Your normal cost is what the employees earn this year, that's 4.2 million. Your past due payments, your unfunded liability is $10 million. So combined, we owe $14.4 million this year. Now, if in fact, there were no more employees for some reason, the robots took over, you would still owe $142 million to CalPERS for the benefits that the current employees and the retirees have earned. So even if you had no normal cost, you would still owe $10 million a year, and in fact, that's a rising cost, if we can go to the next table, please. So, it's important to note, and I think this is a big change that CalPERS has done, if you looked at an actuarial report 10 years ago, they would have not provided the detail that you now do, they give you a report, they give you all these amortization bases, those are important for the decision-making. What's important to note is that each and every year, you get a new amortization base. I treat it more... I treat it more like a loan. So sometimes, it's actually a credit, though. If the CalPERS return is above the benchmark or the discount rate of, say, 7%, you'll get a credit back towards your liability. So if the market does very well, you will get a credit, and that liability of 142 will go down. On the other hand, if something like what happened today, and you have a shock in the market, you in fact will increase the liability. Any questions at this point? Okay. Once again, you can see the green is the miscellaneous plan, and blue is safety. I color coded just so it's easy for people to see. Okay. This is the reason you guys have brought me in, to help explain how to meet the challenge of climbing that mountain. Right now, you're $10 million in your unfunded liability per year in payments. You are required to make fixed payments, and those increase each and every year. They're going up and peaking at $15.2 million as of now, and it will go back down. Almost all cities seem to have a peak around 2030, '32. That is actually common, a very common trend. But, as I said, the shape of that overall layer depends on the individual city. So you can see, for the next, we're going to go up by 50% over the next 12, 13 years.
If I may add, Julio, that is just the UAL payment. That does not include the normal cost payment as well.
That is correct. And assuming you keep the workforce the same, that might grow a little bit with cost of living increases, but right now, that's $4 million, right? So your total annual pension costs will have anywhere four, probably growing each and every year in accord to, so it's at least four, right there, you'd be at 14, you'd be at $19, $20 million by 2030, '31. Okay. Retirement costs are outpacing revenue. Part of this is the fact that you saw that peak, which we just showed you, that's that green peak right there, and then we kind of took a general projection of the increase in net revenues, taking a 2% salary and growth, kind of netting out where you would be in your projected general fund shortfall. So if this trend continues, you will essentially be diminishing your reserves, and you will be in a far worse financial position. I think that's the concern why staff brought me here. How do we address this issue? They start to see this trend, they see that increase in costs, and how is it that we can maintain or prevent that red line from going on and stay in the black? So we have some basic solutions. We've worked with staff, but I think the most important thing to state is I use the word addressing as opposed to fixing or solving, because we've talked about having a dynamic process. If you recall, in the prior page, we had a list of all those amortization bases. The one thing that CalPERS does is each and every year, they're going to add a new base. Some years, it might be a credit; other years, it may increase your total liability. I do know for next year, you are going to increase your liability. We know what CalPERS investment performance has been, and we do know that you have one more year where you have a discount rate that is being adjusted from 7 1/4 down to 7%. Note, we've also indicated that CalPERS, or CalPERS has indicated that they expect the discount rate to go further down, maybe 6%, 6 1/2%. So it is likely in the future that they may make additional assumptions. So the most important thing to know, it's continually changing, it's a dynamic process, so it's not one thing that we can fix with one solution, but something you have to continually revisit and be vigilant in addressing. So, three quick solutions. Something called a synthetic fresh start, which we would, if you find some monies or find some use of reserves, that's always our best recommendation. The use of pension obligation bonds. I think there, there's a new pension obligation bond, primarily, the notion is that in the old days, they would look for actuarial arbitrage, and now what you're doing is refinancing debt. And the last is a taxing exchange. So if I will, real quickly. You have, the red line represents your scheduled payments. One of the things that a synthetic fresh start, well, it's counter to what CalPERS, and let me step back, offers you the option to refinance your payments in a shorter term, kind of like taking a 30-year mortgage with a 15-year mortgage. The problem with that is it increases your costs, it's still at the same interest rate, and you lose flexibility. So if you are to look to make payments or want to accelerate your payments, I would suggest you use this structure, because it gives you greater flexibility. It also saves you greater interest costs. So this is certainly a great vehicle to implement. Usually, we recommend this if you have additional money, say you have a CIP project or some surplus at the end of the budget year, which is always what Santa hopes for, and I would recommend that you apply that towards your pension liabilities. Think of it this way, that they're like loans. So it's prepaying a loan, especially, if you recall, we have, like, if we can go back real quickly, I should have actually explained this a little bit further, to the amortization bases. As you see, that each one of those bases have different terms, they range from six to seven years to 30-year terms. So to maximize your interest cost savings, you would pay off a 30-year loan. If you're looking to maximize the cash flow, immediate cash flow savings, you would pay off or apply monies towards a six- or seven-year loan. So this is one of the things, great transparency now that CalPERS has done, and we've used this as the essential tenet to make financial decisions. So once again, if you are to want to lower your payments the most over a short term, you go over six or seven. If you want to maximize your total savings, you apply to the 30-year loan. So if we may, go back to, there we go, the synthetic fresh start. I will, there's one thing, it says plus ADPs. I don't want to use too many acronyms, but it's important. There's something called additional discretionary payments, that is different from prepayments, which I believe the city already does. So they ask you to prepay your full UAL payment each year, they give you a 3 1/2% payment. So when CalPERS says prepay, they mean that payment that you make on July 1st. They call additional payments, like if you were to make one on your mortgage, say your mortgage is $1,000, like anyone has a $1,000 mortgage in California, and maybe, but you wanted to make an additional $100 payment that gets applied to the loan, that's how you should consider those ADPs, that are additional payments. That would be the gray bars, the additional gray bars. Any questions on synthetic fresh start? Pension obligation bonds. Now, I think the important thing is, people ask me, "Okay, how do I make this, how do I make a more significant impact on my payments? How do I lop off the top of the mountain?" The only way to do that essentially is to refinance the debt. Remember, CalPERS has a payment schedule based at a 7% interest rate. What you can do is issue pension obligation bonds at, in today's market, around 4%, 4 1/2% rate. So really, refinance your existing liability or debt with CalPERS at a lower rate. You would sell bonds to the capital markets and take the monies from the bonds and pay CalPERS, and that would reduce your liability. Now note, one other thing is, we know the next year, you'd have additional bases, but you would be at a significant, well, on that day, you'd be fully funded, the next day, there would be some adjustment. We project the savings for all of your liabilities, $149 million POB, about $65 million the cash flow savings on a present value basis, in today's dollars, $43 million, or 29%. And note, I've been a financial advisor for more than 25 years, there's a standard threshold of about 3% to 5% savings when you refinance a bond. So those are substantial savings that you see. You will realize savings any point below where, as long as CalPERS has a discount rate below your borrowing rate. So right now, it's, well, this next fiscal year, in June, it'll be 7%. That assumes you'd be borrowing 4 1/2%. There is one other mechanism, which is, essentially works just like a POB, but POBs have to be issued on a taxable basis. Most cities can issue bonds on a tax-exempt basis, but because this directly benefits individuals and not the institution, they, the federal tax law requires that you issue bonds on a taxable basis. If I may, go back to the other warning. There we go. The GFOA has a general advisory regarding the issuance of POBs. Note, this is one that they write for the nation in general. One of the things we talk about issuing, number one, is POBs increase the debt burden capacity flexibility. I think in the case of the state of California and CalPERS, you already have a fixed payment. So that is already considered a fixed liability, you're just refinancing it. The second one, POBs have make-whole call features. Now, and for the last five POBs that have been issued in the market, they all have a standard 10-year call, which is what most municipal tax-exempt bonds have. In other words, you're able to refinance it by paying typically 102% of the bond issue. So you're able to refinance for a lower price. A make-whole call essentially says you can't refinance it for interest cost savings. So that feature, the market has now adjusted. Number three, they should be structured in a manner that defers principal payments and extend repayment. In other words, there were a number of municipalities that were extending their payments or their current payments and extending them way past when they were due. That, of course, is a financial no-no, and the city has not contemplated anything to that effect. They must be part of a comprehensive plan to address pension shortfalls, which is what we're talking about right here at this time. And lastly, invested POB proceeds may fail to earn more than the interest rate on the bonds. Well, that is a potential risk, but remember, you have an interest rate cushion if we go back in the $243 million. If you want to look at a different perspective, CalPERS would effectively have to underperform the market by 1% each and every year, or a somewhat equivalent decline, that you had that 30% decline and another shock. You would restart, but that interest savings from your POBs would provide some type of cushion. Lastly, it is impossible to eliminate all risk from any type of financial transaction, but we're noting what those potential risks are, and we think that the interest cost savings provide a pretty substantial cushion. So, I was also asked if the next slide, what kind of the next steps, what's required? Is there voter approval required for a pension obligation bond? As you know, in California, in most cases, you're required to get voter approval, certainly for a general obligation bond. Pension obligation bonds, per the law, are considered somewhat different, because you already have an obligation to pay CalPERS, is considered a debencher. So you have to go through a judicial administrative procedure known as a validation proceeding. That process typically takes about 90 to 120 days, depending on how the court inventura is in processing your application, but it is merely administrative process. But it does require that you approve a validation proceeding, here's the City Council, in order to then issue bonds. So it's kind of a first step, if you take an action to do this, it's an administrative step, and then staff would have to come back and ask for approval to sell the bonds. But it really is kind of a, in this case, it really is the cart before the horse. You have to go to the judge and say, "Yes, we want to issue those." Then he reviews it and says, "Okay, I would approve it." Then you go back and actually make your decision if you want to issue the bonds or not. Any questions regarding that? Last thing, I was asked, okay, the impact of status quo. So what happens if we don't do anything? And this is really important. I was asked, what would happen if we had a recession or a change in the discount rate? Now, your last discount rate pretty much added $30 million to your liability, and CalPERS has somewhat signaled that they may make that adjustment in the future, or if we have a similar kind of decline in your, a 10% decline in market value. Is that a viable, or is that something that's probable? It is probable. You would then have an additional base that you would have to finance. In both cases, remember, that would be an additional amortization base, more like a loan that you would have to pay off over 30 years. You would add it in both cases. So if you see the gray bar in the back is what your current liabilities are, we added a green base on top of it. Comparably, if you look at the POBs or the blue bar chart, you would add a similar green chart. So as you look at it, your top payments, it added about $2 million a year, you'd be about $12 million in payments if you had the POBs, if you had some kind of sudden shock to the system or additional adjustment. On the other hand, if you didn't do anything, you'd be at $18 million on that peak year, or you can see kind of the savings. The difference is probably between the green and the green, is the easiest way to say that. The last option is something known as tax-exempt exchange. This essentially is if you had pay-go projects, typically something like road improvements. And what you would do is as opposed to paying, let's say, $2, $3 million to improve the roads, you would issue a tax-exempt bond, which would be at a lower interest rate, say 3%. And then you would exchange the payments that you would have made to pay off part of that liability, say, $20 million of the liability, and exchange those out in the budget afterward. So you issue, the decision to issue bonds is an independent decision. The backend is kind of a budget switch between the payments you would have been sending off to CalPERS and the payments that you make on the bonds. That saves even more money, though unfortunately, I do not believe that the city has $140 million worth of pay-go projects. So to the extent you can identify that and you have that available, I would always recommend you do that first. To the extent that you have reserves available, I would recommend you do that as well. Unfortunately, there isn't $140 million worth of reserves that the city has. So that is why my recommendation to help address that is a combination of those, but also includes the issuance of pension obligation bonds, or at minimum, to proceed with validation proceeding in order to be given that opportunity to issue in the future. Any questions? Did I meet the timeline?
8B is on the pension issue, so we'll hold off on questions until item 8B, agenda item 8B.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is public hearings, and this is the time and place set for a public hearing on the consideration of matters as presented on this agenda. Let the record show that due notice was given as required by law, and an affidavit to this effect is on file with the Office of the City Clerk. The reports of the city staff relating to these matters shall be made a part of the record of this meeting. Speakers during public hearings shall limit their comments to matters relevant to the item on the agenda, and may be ruled out of order if comments, excuse me, are unrelated to the item. If you challenge in court any of the City Council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing. The time within which judicial review must be sought is governed by California Code of Civil Procedure Section 1094.6. For Agenda Item 6A, Joe Deacon is here for this presentation. Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Chairman Ashburn, and members of the Board of, excuse me?
That's all right. We're going by script, but you're just one notch ahead, and that's fine. This is a time and place for a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution establishing a water service standby charge for fiscal year 2019-20. May I have a reading of the proposed resolution?
Yes, you may, Mr. Mayor. Agenda Item 6A, Resolution Number WWD-272, a resolution of the Board of Directors of Ventura County Water Works District Number 8, establishing a water service standby charge for fiscal year 2019 to '20.
Maybe we have an oral report for staff?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Apologize for my eagerness. Good evening. This is an annual public hearing that is scheduled to adopt a water service standby charge. A water service standby charge applies to undeveloped properties where water service is available but not utilized. Staff recommends that the existing charge of $15.70 per acre remain the same for fiscal year 1920, which is the same rate that has been in effect since 1997. There are minimal costs to the district, so the recommended charge will cover the district's costs for this service. Staff requests that at the close of the public hearing, the Board of Directors adopt a resolution to establish a water service standby charge of $15.70 per acre for fiscal year 2019-20. This concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
No questions? Anybody in the council chambers wish to be heard on this? Any public? No cards? No cards. Would you like to respond? I didn't think so.
Speechless.
The hearing is therefore closed. Are there any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I move staff's recommendation.
I'm sorry?
I move staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda... Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is new business, Agenda Item 8A, direction regarding providing local support from the city's general fund in an amount up to $775,000 to supplement transit fare revenue for the fiscal year 2018 to 19, fare box recovery ratio requirement. And Ron Fujiwaki is here for this presentation.
Good evening again, Mayor Mashburn and council members. I would like to introduce Robin Walker, our senior management analyst in transit and our deputy public works director for transit, Ben Gonzalez, there joining and assisting us tonight on this item. This evening, staff is requesting city council direction whether to provide local funds to supplement transit fare revenue in order to satisfy the mandated fare box recovery ratio requirements for FY 2018-19. The city's transit system receives approximately $4.4 million in State Transportation Development Act, or TDA, Local Transportation Fund, or LTF, Article IV funds. A large portion of these funds are used for transit operation, operating expenses. The TDA fare box recovery ratio, or FBRR, requires the city to recover 20% of its fixed route operating expenses and 10% of the Americans with Disability Act Dial Ride Program operating expenses through ridership or fare revenue. The consequence of not meeting the FBRR requirement is a reduction of TDA LTF funding in a future year. The fare box recovery ratio requirement was implemented in fiscal year 2014-15 when legislation was passed that required the city of Simi Valley to claim TDA funds under Article IV instead of Article VIII. The city previously relied on over $4 million in TDA Article VIII funds for streets and roads, and the transit system was funded directly through the city's general fund. Essentially, the legislation diverted TDA funds to transportation purposes with the net effect of swapping funding sources with over $4 million in TDA Article IV monies funding transit and approximately $2 million in general fund monies for streets and roads. This left a large gap in streets and roads funding and ultimately negatively impacted the general fund. For the first three years of the revised TDA funding program, the city did not encounter a penalty for not meeting the fare box recovery requirement. However, in fiscal year 2017-18, the fare box recovery requirement was not meant for either transit service, ADA, or fixed route, and FY 2017-18 became a non-compliance year. Last year, the city chose not to fund the fare box shortfall, so a penalty of $710,459 will be deducted from the city's FY 2019-20 TDA portion. At this time, staff is estimating that the FY 2018-19 revenues will again, transit revenues that is, will not, will again not be sufficient to meet the fare box recovery requirement for fixed route or ADA services. Since the city is already in non-compliance, the city will be again subject to penalties, currently estimated at $741,000 unless the city provides local support to bring the city into compliance. Contribution of local support would allow the city to qualify for a grace year and stop the penalty cycle. Other jurisdictions in Ventura County, appropriate funds from their general fund or other local funding sources to their transit systems to ensure they meet the required fare box recovery ratio and avoid a penalty. To address the fare box revenue shortfall in the future, the city is working on the implementation of the Short Range Transit Plan, a component of which will address the fare box recovery ratio and enhance stability of the transit system. On February 25th, the city council approved the plan recommendations, including modifications to transit management, improving the, enhancing the fixed route service plan and the ADA DAR service plan, and adjusting and modifying fare policy. That will enhance the Simi Valley Transit Program with the anticipation that fare revenues will increase. In anticipation of meeting the fare box requirement for FY 2018-19, the city council is being asked to provide direction regarding how to best address the potential shortfall. Staff has outlined in detail options and alternatives in the staff report for city council consideration. However, in summary, the city council may authorize the use of local funds up to $775,000 to supplement the fare box recovery ratio, which would stop the penalty cycle and qualify the city for another grace year to implement enhancements to the transit program and hopefully improve our fare box revenue. Or not authorize the use of local funds to supplement the fare box recovery ratio, which would result in another funding penalty in fiscal year 2020-21 in the estimated amount of $741,000, and the penalty cycle would continue. That concludes staff report, and we're all available for questions.
Mr. Mayor, stand corrected, I do have a question.
Okay.
Are we anywhere along the process of looking for an exemption to our streets and roads funds, similar to what Thousand Oaks did?
We have hired someone to work with us up in Sacramento to take those actions, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Several questions. Ron, if you could explain to me, we've been penalized, is it cumulative? For example, you said that we receive $4.4 million from the state, a portion of that is used for transit. How much of that $4.4 is specific to our transit system? Is it all $4.4 million?
All $4.4 goes to the transit program. A large portion of that, $3 to $4 million goes to the operating expenses for the program. The other portions may be capital project, facility enhancements.
Okay, so let's say it takes, split it, so 3.5 is specifically goes to the operating, which is what's used for to derive their contribution, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so is it cumulative? For instance, we lost 710%, or 710,000, excuse me. Does that now reduce the amount they give us the next year? Or is it 710,000 off of that 3.5 million each year, for instance? Am I, is my question clear as mine?
The penalty that we will be subject to in 2019-20 comes off the top of the $4.4 million.
So, okay, so in other words, the penalty, okay, so the amount they still offer is the same, it's just the amount will be redo. I just want to know if the total amount was reduced every year and goes lower and lower if we don't meet it?
As long as we're subject to a penalty, yes. The amount?
So in other words, would it go 300,000, let's say we lost, or 3 million, let's say we lost 500,000, let's say it was 500,000, I know that's not what it is. The next year, they give us 2.5 million, and we again didn't meet fare box recovery, so now it becomes 2 million.
Oh, no, it reboots every year.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand. Oh, so it does reboot every year?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you. I'm sorry if I'm not asking very clearly. Okay, thank you, I need to understand that.
Keeping with the technology discussion earlier, we're rebooting.
Most appropriate, okay. So here's my question, because I love the report we passed in February, that 40, the new plan, and I went back to it because I wanted to see how it related to tonight's discussion. Page seven, fare box policy, these were the recommendations to achieve fare box recovery, and I quote, it says, "As a last resort, utilize city of Simi Valley general funds as local funds to achieve fare box recovery requirement." So that, that report said this should be the last resort. That was two months ago, and I'm not sure how we got to the last resort in two months. The other recommendations, for instance, advertising revenues earned by Simi Valley Transit can be included in fare box, in other words, that could help offset it, correct?
Yes.
We haven't done those other things yet, is that correct?
No, we're, the implementation of the recommendations in the Short Range Transit Plan will be coming onboard starting next fiscal year. The consultant is finalizing an implementation plan, which we can follow to enhance our revenue, lower our operating costs.
Okay. And if I could just read one more, is that all right? I'm sorry, thank, okay. One more, just because I'm trying to understand, and this is from page 21 of this great report. It says, "In fiscal year 2018-19," so that should be what's, right now, we're talking about, "there's an operating budget of $8.23 million. However, the unaudited actual cost for fiscal year 1718 was $7.08 million. Since there are not planned changes to the actual service supply, it is anticipated the fiscal year 2018-19, actual operating expenses will be well below the $8.23 million budget." So as I read that, it made me think that even though it's nice that we have those state funds, we are still coming in under budget, even if they were to be reduced by 700,000. Is that accurate? Am I reading this correctly?
I'm not quite sure. I'll try to answer in this, this way. In 1819, I believe you said, we started with a budget of 8 million, and a lot of the savings that we encounter, a lot of times are due to personnel savings. There are a lot of, or several, ongoing vacancies in the transit division, full-time, part-time drivers, extra drivers, et cetera. So we are constantly recruiting, so there's constant vacancies. So our personnel costs reduce significantly. Whether or not that amount of savings covers the penalty that we're going to encounter, I don't know that we've actually looked at that as closely as we should, we will in the, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's it for my question. Thank you.
I saw on page four that you mentioned that this would impact future capital projects such as vehicle acquisition. So what, if we didn't pay out of the general fund, then the total penalties would be, would impact these transit capital projects, right?
Correct.
So what kind of capital projects do we have planned that would be impacted by this if we don't fund it?
Well, as the report indicated, we do have plans to replace a couple of our buses that are in the 1.5, 1.6 million range. We have programs to improve or enhance the transit maintenance facility, the building itself. We have some replacement sedans that need to be purchased, bus stop improvements that are on the books right now, some other maintenance programs, as well as some software programs to help us be more efficient.
Would all these capital improvements, if we paid the amount due out of the general fund, would that possibly increase ridership and increase our fare box recovery?
The capital projects, a few of them might. There is a possibility of a little transit hub out here by the intersection of Avenue to Simi and Tampa Canyon Road, which will allow better transfers between routes, and so that might increase ridership. As you know, we are going, we're going to expand our routes out to Moore Park College. We hope that enhances quite a bit. But, and obviously, the purchases of buses will maintain our fleet to keep that going. Some of the other things, improvements to bus stop, bus stop areas, just enhancements or maintenance of the maintenance facility, the bus facility, I don't think would necessarily enhance ridership or enhance fare revenue.
Thank you.
So basically, what we're doing is subsidizing the riders if we provide this.
We're subsidizing the transit program, which I guess you could say.
Okay, yeah.
Subsidizes riders.
And so with the proposed changes, like was just mentioned, plus I think there's a list of changes proposed by the advisory council, does that give us confidence that we are going to be meeting our obligation in the future?
At this point, I can't guarantee that will occur. That is obviously the goal of making these enhancements and modifications to routes to encourage more ridership, which obviously encourages fares. Some of the, as part of the Short Range Transit Plan, there's a, what we call a community route system, which is a smaller bus going to more local destinations, so we're anticipating greater ridership on that system. We're going to do better interconnect of bus routes, community routes, ADA routes, and so obviously, the goal is to increase the ridership, which ultimately increases the fares. But absolutely meeting the fare box recovery ratio, I can't guarantee it, but obviously that's the main goal.
So one thing you said that maybe you can hit on again that concerns me is, you said the lack of personnel, drivers, is saving revenues that can help keep the program alive.
No, the vacancies in our drivers or personnel vacancies saves the, or reduces the operating expense. It doesn't reduce our revenue.
Okay.
Yeah. So when the vacant, obviously.
Okay, it saves the operating expense, I understand that.
Our personnel costs.
But they're pretty important, aren't they?
They are, and it is a constant flow. It doesn't mean we necessarily don't have enough drivers, but some drivers may have to work some overtime due to vacancies. But again, we're constantly hiring new drivers and rotating drivers through the system. So, but there is a, quite a few vacancies that occur in the system, because I think it's, you know, some of the positions are part-time, some of them are like, temporary employees. So some of those employees will come onboard and then perhaps find something else. So we, again, it's a constant shuffling of replacing personnel. We have, I don't know, 20 full-time employees, about 20 full-time employees, but we probably have 40 drivers that operate both the vans and the buses throughout the system. So again, constant shuffle.
So it's challenging, but we're able to do it, and in the future, we're able to cover.
Yes.
We're not down to the bare bones minimum, where all of a sudden, we're going to have buses that can't be driven simply because there's no drivers.
Correct, that's correct.
We're up to that point.
We'll be there, even if, you know, I think on a few occasions, our supervisors, and maybe even Ben has had to go out and drive a bus because somebody at the last minute called in sick, somebody during their route got sick. But, you know, the division does what it needs to do in order to make sure the system is operating up to its requirement.
Could, Mr. Mayor, just a real comment, because I'm not an expert on this subject, but being on BCTC for the last two years and also on SCAG's Transportation Board, this is, this is an occurrence that is happening nationwide. There is less ridership on public transportation across the board. Am I wrong in saying that?
No, that's correct.
It's been going on, it's been steadily declining over the last five, six years.
That's, yes, correct.
This is the problem we're going to continue to face, and our transit proposal that is coming forward will help, but it's not going to solve this problem.
I had another question. Well, I know when we have, we, there was a city council meeting a few months ago where we were considering, you know, switching our transportation system and contracting it out. And there were a lot of people who came, a lot of residents who came and talked about their personal relationship with the drivers. And they spoke very highly of the drivers and how they know them and how they, you know, know them personally, they know them by name, they know what their needs are, when they need a wheelchair, assistance to get on the bus. And so in an effort to increase the stability of the bus drivers and the relationships that they have, especially when, you know, we do have a growing homeless population, we do have residents with mental health issues and, you know, who need that assistance, and the bus drivers are often the first line of defense when issues like that arise. Would having these capital improvement projects, if we paid this amount, would having those capital improvement projects increase the stability of the employees, the bus drivers, so that we could continue to have those relationships with our residents who ride the bus?
When you maintain an adequate fleet, and then the drivers know that they will have an ass. that they will have an assignment the following day, the following week. We're currently looking at, we currently utilize CNG buses, and they have a useful life because of the CNG tank system or storage system. So, we do have to replace those, and part of that is one of our capital projects. If we don't replace those, and we don't have the money to replace those, then the fleet size goes down, which may result in some of the drivers at least getting cut in some of their hours. But, you know, we're not, we're not looking at that, we don't, we're not there yet. I think we're still, except for this glitch in the law, I think we're still in good shape. And Ben and Robin have been working hard, and they're relatively new to staff, they've been working hard in getting the division a little more efficient and saving on operating expenses, coming up with these plans with our consultant to enhance our ridership, thereby enhancing our fares. So, eliminating capital, you know, some of the ones like bus stops perhaps won't impact the thing, but reducing the size of the fleet because they've aged out or something, I think potentially impacts not only the riders, but some of the staff as well, in terms of reduced hours.
Just out of curiosity, what is the lifespan of a CNG bus?
Anywhere from 10 to 12 years, and then depending on the miles, but they range from 12 years roughly.
And what would be, if you know the answer to the question, what would be the lifespan of an electric bus?
That is not known yet. However, they talk from other meetings that I've been doing, conferences, it's a lot more, anywhere from 14 to maybe 16 years. However, there's the whole, how long can a vehicle run with the AC on, you know, with the driver going up hills? So, they're trying to, that's the newest thing right now, and like Ron said, once CNG is, at some point, is going to be phasing out, and electric vehicles is going to be a mandate for all transit agencies across the United States. So, there's a lot of studies going on right now, and a lot of, if you will, conferences about this new technology on vehicles, so.
So, would it be better for us to invest in electric buses now, or hold off?
It would be better. The mandate is coming soon. They're saying approximately 20, 25 roughly, or 26 will be the mandate. However, they're going to allow for your CNG vehicles, anything you have, to continue its useful life, but then mandate any new vehicle purchases to go electric. So, for example, if we have anything that's going to be retiring in the next three, four years, will be, it'd be, who has to go to the electric vehicle, which we're looking at.
And once we switch to electric vehicles, the CNG that we're not using, we could sell, right? And that would be revenue for the city?
I'm not too sure. Well, what we have to do is, they have to go to auction, and then a portion of that does have to go to the federals, and then we, I believe we do get a portion of that, I'm not sure, but you'd have to give some of that money back to the FTA. However, I'm not sure exactly the amount, if we keep.
Five thousand?
It's a 5,000? 5,000 of that, that we keep per vehicle.
Over 5,000?
Over 5,000.
So, even if we, even if electric buses cost more, eventually, it could be, because we're not using the CNG, it could be a source of some revenue for the city.
Right, right. And then there's, you could, there's also grants out there. So, the state is giving out grants for electric vehicles. It's called the HVIP program. So, there's, for example, if they're offering it from 80 to $95,000 for a vehicle amongst other incentives. So, they're really pushing and helping agencies to go that direction, not just say, go buy these vehicles, but there's lots of grants that you could go to get those vehicles.
So, if we applied for those grants, that would help with our cost, right? Defray our cost of the buses as well?
Correct. The electric vehicles, there's studies saying, you could, you know, electric versus CNG, there's a cost savings there, so that's a big push as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a follow-up on what Councilmember Lou Evinos said. If we go electric, and the state or the feds, whoever, CARB is doing away with CNG, who's going to be the customer? Because if we can't use it, I would think any other agency. I'm just curious, do you know, or is that a dead issue at that time, no more CNG?
Yeah, at some point, CNG, and again, this is, nothing has passed, but it's, at some point, CNG is going to completely go away, at least for all transit agencies. But, it's, I think it's too early. Right now, it's kind of fresh, and everyone's kind of seen where this is headed, I guess.
Yeah, no, and I understand what you're saying, and we don't want to end it today, but I certainly wouldn't want to base our future on it in any form of revenue.
Right.
Okay.
Just ask one more, oh, I'm sorry, you keep asking questions.
Okay, go ahead. I'll wait.
No, are you sure? I thought you were done. I apologize for having to.
Go ahead.
I wanted to take about the fare box recovery, which is what this discussion is, ultimately, we have to decide. Do we have a sense of others, say, in Ventura County, who are receiving fare box recovery, who are receiving transit funds and are subject to meeting, having to meet fare box recovery ratios? Are all the other cities meeting it, and we're just kind of out and not doing it? What, or is it, or are we in a group of everyone else?
Almost all the agencies in Ventura County are providing local funds in order to meet fare.
So, in other words, they're not meeting.
They're not meeting it either.
No one's meeting their fare box recovery. And the only way, if they want to keep those funds at the current total, is to meet it.
Yes.
Gotcha.
If I could say, like Councilmember Judge just said, it's kind of across the United States, it's not just Ventura County. LA County and other agencies are suffering from this, however, they have other tax measures that can kind of offset those costs.
LA County just passed Measure M, isn't that basically just for buses and stuff like that?
That's probably about two, three years ago that passed.
They've never met their fare box recovery.
Right.
If I could, I'd like to ask the city manager, based on we're right into budget prep times, and obviously, $775,000 is a lot of money. I'm sure that you've taken a look at the request, and I hope you would know where that money's coming from, and if we can afford to do that, or if you have to cut something because of it, what's going to be cut?
Fair. Let me lead in on a couple of things before I get there. By design, municipal transit systems subsidize their riders. I mean, there are, I'm not aware of a single system that probably makes money. In my prior career, even prior to coming to the City of City Valley 30, 40 years ago, I worked for another city and handled their dialeride system, and it was subsidized back in the 80s. So, it's not, it's nothing that has changed in over 40 years, it's probably not going to change in another 40. They just, you subsidize your ridership. The, I think, to Councilmember Evinos' point, I think, the capital kind of keeps, ensures that we continually have a reliable system. Without that reliable system, then we're failing our ridership, and I think that's part of the problem. And the calculation that goes into the fare box recovery ratio is, Robin's tried to explain all the nuances to it, it's not just a, here's your revenue, here's your expenditures. You get credit for certain revenues, certain expenditures are counted, certain expenditures are not counted. It's a fairly complicated formula that goes through the state controllers' report at the end of the day, that spits out what that fare box recovery ratio is. So, it's, it's not a cut and dry, we have fewer, we have fewer transit coach operators, so we have less expenditures. I wish it was that easy. The reason why we're looking at this, and you can see my recommendation, is that it gets us that grace year, where we don't have a penalty. It gives us that opportunity where we've identified back in February, a number of implementation measures to reduce costs, to bring in more revenue, and to meet that fare box recovery ratio on an ongoing basis. We talked about taking our four fixed route systems down to three, four routes down to three routes. The new dispatch system for the dialeride, which we anticipate is going to save a lot of time. We've had discussions with the City of Monrovia about their lift program and how they implement that. They've gone from, correct me wrong, I think, from a $25 per person subsidy down to $13, if I recall.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Judge. So, it reduces that subsidy that we have, that every ridership puts into. In terms of the funds, we're looking at utilizing general fund revenue. We have approximately $37 million in general fund reserves, and we would look at taking the money from that. The discussion was that we do other cities meet their fare box recovery ratio. What they do is, they bake their money into their budget at the beginning of the year. We have chosen to wait to see what that, if we meet our fare box recovery ratio, and if we don't, how much money do we have to put in, rather than overfunded or underfunded? So, that's why we're coming to you now, as opposed to putting it into the normal budget process that will be adopted starting July 1. Do we have the money? Yes, we would have it through our general fund reserves. Would we have to cut anyone or make cuts in order to do that? No, we wouldn't, because we'd be coming out of the reserve that, really, one of the reasons why we do have a general fund reserve is to react to situations like this. If we put this money in for this year, we know we won't have a penalty next year. We know that we have that grace period, and that gives us that opportunity to implement all the measures we're looking to implement.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just a couple of questions for Brian now. So, I just want to be clear, we are subsidizing our riders right now, correct? In a sense that 4.4 is what we're getting from the state, and our budget is 8 million. So, right now, we, am I correct, we are putting city money in, correct? Is that inaccurate? Is it all coming from?
I should clarify that not only do we get the state monies, we do also get federal transit monies.
Okay.
So, that 8.8 is a combination.
Gotcha, okay. So, is there any money that we are putting in ourselves beyond state and federal at this?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Thank you.
Correct. There is no general fund money going to the transit system today.
At all, okay. And then my next final question, and I will be quiet. Maybe.
Maybe.
If we don't put those funds in, it doesn't, I just want to make clear, it doesn't stop our implementation of this new plan.
All right.
It might slow it.
It might cancel it.
It wouldn't cancel it, no.
Some of them.
We will continue to implement every measure that we possibly can.
Gotcha. So, it's one stop. Now, not that I'm advocating one way or the other, I'm just wanting to understand. It doesn't stop it. It might slow it, it just doesn't give the, okay.
Comments, questions?
I think this is one of the services we provide to our residents. And, you know, promoting public transportation is one of the ways that we make our community healthy and sustainable for the future. In whichever, whichever way we need to, and I have taken to our PSC, whichever way we can improve and promote ridership on our public transportation systems, whichever they be, whether they be buses, or the dialeride, or, you know, our future autonomous vehicles, whatever it is that we choose to do, I think that's going to, again, reduce the carbon emissions and make sure that we have a less extreme climate and a more sustainable climate and planet for our future. So, and seeing as how every other city, you know, supplements their ridership, I think it's our responsibility to do so as a city. That is part of the excellent service that we provide to our residents.
Other comments?
I'll just a quick comment. I think by doing this, it enables us to take the time for all of our new plans to go into place. That's really what we're looking at, we're just extending our time a little bit. And I agree with Councilwoman Evinos, we really do need to supplement for our community. As a little bit side, Budget Committee, we can ask them to look at, how can we improve our ridership? Just for some outside ideas. That way, because it's not something you really have the staff to do, and they've got some outside brains, maybe they can come up with some new ideas.
Well, my only comment would be the fact that we could, there is no, there's no magic bullet to this, even if you eliminated our responsibility for our public buses, if we were to contract with Gold Coast or something like that, then we would lose the state and federal funds that we get for our buses, thus eliminating all those funds from our city. As you see, it's an expensive fare box recovery. Unless we figure out a way that we can get people to ride on our buses, there's really not too much else we can do about it. And we're going to subsidize the buses, and it's just the way it's going to go forward. Obviously, every cent we get for these buses is tax dollars, so just throwing good money after bad is, it seems counterproductive, but, again, there is no easy explanation for this. We, you can buy a car for $3,000, you can insure that car for $800. So, there's a lot of competition out there between getting your own car and riding a bus. You can get an Uber for 10 bucks to take you from one end of this valley to the other. So, there's a lot of competition out there for the buses. We have to find a way to make our buses more appealing. And part of the proposal coming forward will be new routes, things like that, which will be appealing. Our students right now are, I think they're the greatest users of our buses. Am I wrong? I'm pretty sure that's still correct. So, you know, we also might want to look at talking to the school district about helping us out to pay for fare box recovery in the future. Those kind of things. I mean, I'm all for that, but those are my comments.
Thank you. I can tell you want to make a comment.
I do eventually, yes, but I'll wait my turn. It's interesting, as you read through, if I understand correctly, last year, the city council decided not to put the fare, put funds into it. For whatever reason, for financial reasons, they chose not to. Not that that makes, we're totally different council. And initially, my fiscal conservative side says, well, you know, will we be able to still do it without it? But, if I read the report correctly, if we match, if we put these funds in at 75,000, whatever isn't used will come back to match, et cetera. But, it does allow theoretically to fully implement the plan that was presented to us in February, which had some wonderful ideas for increasing fare box recovery. And if I understand correctly, too, if we change the route up to 25%, then that gives us two years that we don't have to meet those fare box recovery ratios.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
On the fixer's side only.
On the fixer's side only, not on the ADA, I understand. But, so for all those reasons, I see, I see, I can see value in doing this and putting funds in as well. Obviously, it's important. And I liked your idea of partnering with the city, with the school district on this mic, I like that.
Yeah, that's kind of like unicorns.
Okay. Personally, I find it, in almost every case, very distasteful to kick any item, any can down the road, so to speak. However, if we don't move this down the road, number one, I appreciate the assurance from the city manager that the funds are there, and it's not taken away from anybody else to use those funds. So, that's a huge help to me. Secondly, we do have a plan, and we haven't had time to implement that plan. And by doing this, I think we're buying time, and from what I'm hearing, we're never going to get it to where it's revenue neutral. But, we're doing something, trying to be the best we can be. And if we don't implement those plans, then we'll never know if they'd work or not. So, based on those items, I'm going to break my rule of kicking things down the road. I think we should kick it down the road, so we can continue to work on it, continue to receive those funds, and do the best we possibly can. And we have the right people working on it, so let's see if we can get it done.
I would like to add, you're absolutely right, Mr. Mayor, there's one funny comment, I'll say. Having listened to some Sacramento politicians talking, some of the meetings I've been in as far as transportation goes, I've heard this comment, and this is verbatim, it's a quote, but I'm not going to say who said it. "I can't believe we're still allowing people to drive their cars." So, if that was ever to come true, then public transportation would make a huge comeback.
Only in Sacramento. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I move to authorize the interim city manager to provide local support in an amount up to $775,000 from the city's fiscal year 2018-19 general fund to supplement transit fare revenue for the fiscal year 2018-19 FBRR requirement, and approve a supplemental budget request.
Second. Motion... A motion and second, call for the vote.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is New Business Agenda Item 8B, Discussion of the City's CalPERS Pension Liability and the Financial Solutions Available, Authorization to Pursue a Judicial Validation proceeding and Direction to the Budget Advisory Committee to Receive a Presentation Regarding the City's CalPERS Pension Liability and Financial Solutions. And Samantha Argabright is here for this presentation.
Good evening again, Mayor Mashburn and members of the City Council. As you heard from Julio earlier this evening, the city anticipates that its pension liability with CalPERS will continue to grow and should CalPERS lower the discount rate from 7% to 6.5%, as they are rumored to do, or if there is another recession, the city would be facing an additional $30 million in unfunded liability. Recognizing that addressing the city's pension liability is a significant decision and all information should be carefully considered, staff recommends that the City Council take two actions this evening. First, that the City Council authorize the judicial validation proceeding to receive a final legal opinion regarding the validity of a proposed pension obligation bond. It's anticipated that the cost for this would be approximately $25,000 to $40,000 and take 90 to 120 days. This will not bind the City Council to issue a POB, nor does it commit the city to issue a POB in a specific amount. However, should the City Council choose this path, this portion of the process would already be underway. Second, it is recommended that the City Council direct staff to invite Urban Futures to make a presentation on the city's pension liability to the Budget Advisory Committee for their input. Following that time, staff will return to the City Council for further direction. Julio Morales from UFI and I are available for questions.
Questions, staff?
I have a question. Could you tell us, give us, you know, maybe you know what it is exactly. What percentage of CalPERS say the return was going to be this year?
The rate of return for CalPERS this year? It is 8.60% as of June 30, 2018.
Okay.
So we will know the rate of return for June 30, 2019. I think they'll probably be released around September.
Was that close to their projection?
The projection, the discount rate that we've been talking about really is what we call the investment hurdle. The investment hurdle this year is 7.25%. Next year, it'll be 7%. So it was above and you will get a credit for that. But recall, there's also that reduction in the discount rate which reduced it. So yes, it was higher, 7.25 is the hurdle, 8.6% was the actual investment return.
Do you know what they earned, say, up until February? Do you have any numbers? Or that won't come out until the whole?
Well, you know, that's kind of interesting because December 30, when we have some market adjustments, we were at zero. As of February, when the market moved back up, we were, I think, at like 5% or 6% the last time I talked to CalPERS. So I could get you a more specific number if you'd like, but I think at the end of the day, well, it doesn't matter where you are at one point, it's always dynamic and changing, but if you want to see how they perform at the end of the year, I can come back to you with that report. Would you like to know specifically the February return?
That'd be great if you could get it for me.
Certainly.
Put a memo in our box, we just all get it, that'd be perfect. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other question? Go ahead.
You can go first.
No, you're first.
Okay, I have several. You quoted the General Finance Officers Association recommendations or thoughts about it. I guess I'm concerned when I read specifically in their release that came out May 7, 2019, the GFOA recommends that state and local governments do not issue pension obligation bonds. And then they gave the following reasons. Of course, some of them were tied to what you said in your presentation. But I'm concerned about going against something that the Government Finance Officers Association is recommending against. What is your thoughts about that?
You know, I served on the National Debt Advisory Committee for the GFOA. I've been a financial advisor for 25 years. Now, it's important, it's actually very unique, if I may tell you, when you sit on the National Debt Advisory Committee, you sit in a room with about 15 other people who are asked to sit on the term, and it's the only board that actually does that, have the people from the SEC, MSRB, all these organizations sit down. When you set and determine a policy, it's a national policy and one that sets forth for the entire country. So what we have is what happens in the state of California and the CalPERS program in particular, because remember, there are county plans, there's CalSTIRS and everything else. So I had tried to identify that. I believe in this case, when they write a national policy, they write an advisory and there's a number of things. I believe the circumstances in this case do actually meet your needs. You're also asking for some kind of cushion that you can provide. So I do believe it's something that works in general, but specifically, as your independent financial advisor, I believe that the circumstances could support that. So these are, those haven't changed and it's the reason I provide those upfront. Are we contradicting to the general application? You are, but I believe the circumstances in this specific case do warrant that recommendation.
So let me understand, in this case, if bonds were to be issued, as you're advocating, the funds issued would go directly to CalPERS? It's not being invested elsewhere for us to arbitrage or?
No, they're not.
Do we have that option? I mean, I'm just, are you advocating one or the other?
No, legally you would not.
Okay.
Legally, you wouldn't. When we, I helped draft some of these policies, when you look at it, you have maybe the township of McLean-Fogg in Illinois, which I did a financing for when I was a young, young banker, in the tune of $2.2 million. The financial sophistication of a very small township in Illinois to do something like this and to have a banker suggest to do this bond, or extend the debt out, or do it with a non-callable feature, those are the really primary considerations. For you to understand something is the most important part. Understand the potential risks and either take something that offsets. So we went one by one and then looked at the primary considerations and said, there's an answer to each and all of these, and there's even one to number five, which is probably the primary concern. As long as you understand that, then I think it's an action that you can take. But as a general rule, they tell people, avoid this and then go ask an independent financial advisor, which is the number one recommendation the GFOA always says. In order to make any financial decision, you should have an independent financial advisor, not an investment banker telling you, hey, you should issue these, it will solve your problem. And note, the most important thing I have also said, this doesn't solve your problem. It addresses it and places you in a better financial position and you will have to continue to address it going forward.
So let me ask about your third option, your Pago?
Tax exempt exchange.
Okay. I know that we are talking, I believe there's been some discussion about issuing bonds for capital improvements, that we have a definite need and we haven't, that hasn't even come before this body yet, but I understand that might be a discussion. Those bonds, if theoretically, if we were to issue bonds for, to make some to meet our capital improvement needs, could those bonds that we issued be used in your third scenario? I mean, may not be, we're not talking 150 million, whatever, I'm not sure the amount we are, but could they be used in this, in your third scenario?
I think you're going the wrong direction. I think the, we would take, if we had?
A Pago project.
Yeah, if we had $10 million in cash to spend on the sanitation district fund, rather than spend that on a sanitation district improvement, we would borrow that money and take that 10 million, put it towards the pension.
I understand, but the way it was represented in the report, if I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, because maybe I'm misunderstanding. Let's say we have a capital improvement project, $50 million we need to do, we issue bonds for $50 million. You don't use all of those funds immediately because it's amort, you use it over time.
No, it only, it only is intended for Pago projects. Those two words are very critical. It has to be something that you would have not issued bonds for, something you've done a Pago project. This is often best used for water districts or water enterprise funds because they're replacing certain pipes or valves and they say, oh, this has a 15-year life, a long life, but we usually pay for it on a Pago basis. So you don't have enough Pago capital projects to do that. That was my first thing. You want to use reserves, then a tax exempt exchange, but there is not enough in proceeds for you to actually make a substantial impact on your financial position or your UAL.
Okay, so one of the GFOA thoughts, and I think you mentioned, but I'd like you to discuss a little bit more, is that this, issuing these bonds theoretically could affect our borrowing?
Capacity?
Capacity. And I know we want to do other bonds possibly.
No.
Or borrow funds to do that.
From a rating perspective, you're saying if you would go and impact your rating, your capacity, no, these are viewed as an obligation already. You already have a fixed obligation. As we noted, it's a deb ensure. So there's that schedule, those are fixed payments that CalPERS is requiring it. So you're refinancing at a lower rate. If anything, it increases your borrowing capacity and strengthens your financial position. Now, in other states, that might not be the case, but in the state of California, with the CalPERS system, it is. And that is the, that is the new landscape that CalPERS has established. Part of the reform that they had with Peppera, which you know, those new employees, they started these changes, greater transparency, requiring fixed payments for the UAL. CalPERS wants their money. So if you have this fixed payment, you're either paying it at 7% or lower, 4%, 4.5%.
Okay.
If those other options are available, we recommend those, to do those first, but those aren't viable options for your entire liability.
Sure, I get you.
I had a question. You said if we started the judicial validation proceeding, if we approve that tonight, and let's just say in the next week, there was, you know, huge drop in the market and our pension obligation increased, we could change the amount of the pension obligation bonds that are issued?
Absolutely. Usually you go to City Council with a not to exceed authorization amount and it usually is far greater to give you that cushion. So if it's 150, you'd say, oh, 175. Everyone understanding to give the flexibility. When you actually sell the bonds is when you target the actual dollar amount. For the judicial validation, you just choose an amount, typically enough to pay for the entire obligation at a time.
Okay, I just want to make sure we have that flexibility, thank you.
Absolutely.
I've got a question for you. To start this judicial validation, what is the cost to the city?
As she noted, it's $25,000 to $40,000 are estimated legal costs. You have to get bond counsel, you have to pay the lawyers, I should have gone to law school. And you have to go through the judicial validation proceeding, they're the only entity that really handles that. And then you would also have to hire an investment bank typically through an RFP, but they're not paid until and if you issue bonds. So $25,000 to $40,000 is the estimate in legal fees that you would have to pay.
And what time, at what point do we become committed to it? I think in one of your previous presentations, you said we're not committed, just start the process?
After the judicial validation proceeding and we'd have to come back to City Council, you'd then have to decide whether you would want to issue bonds. So this is really an administrative requirement to say you're able to do something. And no point before the judge has said yes, can you do it?
Okay, but if he says yes and we said, we changed our mind, can we?
If you change your mindset, you don't have to, you're not.
You don't have to issue bonds, right. You can get the opinion, you don't have to do it.
Okay, and where I'm going with this, a question for Sam, is we have a Budget Advisory Committee that we like to go to for consulting and they haven't even received this yet. And so we're being asked to vote on something tonight when our own advisory committee hasn't yet been able to communicate with us, so.
I was concerned about that also.
That's a concern of mine. These are people that may have good, valid questions and then would be able to come back to us before we commit to anything.
Right, and that, and?
And that's what we have them for and I don't want to go around people or if we're not going to use them, let's dump that committee.
And that's why staff recommended really a concurrent process. So staff recommends that the Budget Advisory Committee do receive essentially the same presentation that you received this evening, to have the opportunity to ask questions, to weigh in, also provide recommendations to the City Council, as well as that staff would begin to pursue the judicial validation proceeding, because then that just provides options to the City Council, does not commit the City Council. So both of those things can happen concurrently.
But would we be looking at spending money if we started the judicial process?
There would be a financial implication, yes.
I think that's what the gentleman said, is we'd be committed to $25,000 to $40,000.
Correct, there would be a financial implication.
So that there is a commitment.
Right.
I would like just to see you go to the Budget Advisory Committee first.
You can always wait with the lawyers.
Have him put on his presentation for them, have them come back and tell us what they think.
It's a timeline management.
That gives us a transparency and stuff of going out to that committee that we do have, like you pointed out.
I agree. Do you have any comments? You're going to say something?
I have a possible motion then, if we're at that point, but I don't.
I think so. We discussed this far enough as far as the advisory committee.
Well, I have a question. If we tabled the motion, then we have to bring it back at a later date for a vote, yes? Was that going to be your motion?
No, no. My motion would be, I move to direct the staff to bring this issue to the Budget Advisory Committee and for staff to return to the City Council with the committee's input and further direction. Basically just leaves out, right now, doing, starting the legal process of validation for, at this point.
Do we know when they're meeting next, the Budget Advisory Committee?
We'll tell them to meet next week.
Whenever we tell them.
Yeah, then we're fine.
Oh, okay, so we can tell them to meet so we can proceed?
But there would be no reason we couldn't, if there's this urgent, then we could call them and ask them to come up with a quick meeting.
Well, we have an agenda item for them to discuss, so we can certainly get it on the calendar for them.
I've been told several times, they can meet anytime.
There you go.
Several times. I'd second that motion.
Okay, would you repeat your motion?
My motion was, my glasses back on. I move to direct staff to bring this issue to the Budget Advisory Committee and for staff to return to the City Council with the committee's input and further direction. It really is just the second half of what's already there. It's just took half of what you already had there.
And then for them to meet right away around?
Second.
Okay, call for the vote?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I just request that you have more places open past nine o'clock.
We're working on it. I hear you.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation.
Appreciate it.
Del Taco's open 24 hours.
Yep.
In-N-Out's open till midnight.
Go hit Tommy's. It's always open. Oh, they do? I didn't know that, I thought Tommy's was open all the time.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is 9A City Council Board Member, Special District Member Reports. Mr. Mayor, please.
Okay, who would like to go first? That would be Councilmember Litzler.
I don't mind going first. On May 6, met with Urban Futures, we just had the presentation, I appreciated his time then and again this evening. On Wednesday, May 8, I had the privilege of visiting Vista Real Charter High School event that they had and they talked about different educational options and I'm appreciative that we have a wonderful school district with great things happening, but I'm appreciative of this charter school who, whose mission is to help students who are maybe falling through the cracks or falling out. And so I was appreciated hearing what they had to say. I briefly was at the end of the installation of the bleed control kits. I think it's exciting that we have that added to our, to our city structure and to go along with our other things that are, is IEDs, am I saying that correctly, that are posted? I'm appreciative of that. On Thursday, May 9, appreciated my meeting with interim C manager Brian Gabler, appreciated his insights about things that are happening developmentally in Simi Valley. I also attended Simi Valley High School's concert with Moore Park College and I appreciate their collaborative efforts and what's happening musically. Friday, May 10, attended the Simi Valley Police Department Recognition Dinner and I was appreciative that we honored Jessica Newman earlier this evening and just thought I should mention that there were other fine, outstanding people that were also awarded. And I thought I should make a mention of our Explorer of the Year, Annabelle McCarthy, but there are lots of great award recipients there. Saturday, May 11, attended the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center Foundation Annual Spotlight Awards. There too were many outstanding people who were noted, but I wanted to just quickly commend Andrew Allen and Kenan Hooks, who were both mentioned as Artists of the Year, and then Lucas Panksel, who was the Young Artist of the Year. So we have some outstanding. So, we have some outstanding things happening in Simi Valley as far as production and drama. I think that's it for my report this evening. Thank you, Mary, Mayor, appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Juvenos.
On Monday, May sixth, I also attended the meeting with Urban Futures. On Wednesday, I not only went to the Community Coalition United Meeting, I actually got trained with a number of our residents on the bleed control kits and how to use them. I want to thank leadership for paying for those bleed control kits. There's twenty-seven of them throughout the city. There were a lot of seniors that were there, especially a lot of them who aren't bloodthinner, who said they wanted to know how to stop bleeding. So, I am now fully trained, I have my certificate in my office, along with about forty other residents that got trained in how to use the bleed control kits. Very helpful. So, thank you to leadership for providing those kits, and they're found throughout Simi Valley, there's twenty-seven of them, on, at public facilities. On Thursday, May ninth, I attended the Task Force on Homelessness, and good turnout from Ventura County, the continuum of care. We're continuing to move forward, we're going to be looking at the memorandum of, the M O U, to make sure that we tackle the issue of homelessness in Simi Valley. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Tuesday, May seventh, I attended a meeting with Interim City Manager Brian Gabler, and he kept, brought me up to speed on some stuff going on in the city. Very happy to hear the Black Bear Diner's going along, so were a lot of other people I told, so everything's going well. Still waiting to see what's going to happen with the stuff around town, especially our mall, so hopefully we'll get some updates on that. I know it's not going to be soon, but I'd like to find out what's going on there. Friday, May tenth, I attended the Police Department's Recognition Dinner. Again, I want to congratulate all the recipients that won, but I have a question for the chief, since he's in the building. I'd like to know who the top deuce-getter was on the Sheriff's Department for Thousand Oaks. I'd like to get some numbers on that, because people are always asking me, you know, why don't we go to the sheriffs and stuff like that? And I explain to them how important it is to have our own police department, and I believe part of that would, I could probably, I'm just going to go out on a limb and guess, that our numbers are much better than theirs when it comes to arrests. So, I'm always concerned about stuff like that, especially when I hear those comments being made. It's much better to have your own department and have that control over it. I mean, there's no, I'm not making a knock on the Sheriff's Department, I'm sure they do a great job, but I'd rather have the local control. Our police department does a great job, and I was happy to be there to recognize those recipients and to say hi, and always proud of our department. On Saturday, May eleventh, I attended the ribbon cutting for Sinorama, which is a chamber commerce center. They opened up, changed ownership basically, over there off Tappo in L.A. I was explaining to them at the time, I remember when I was a young kid, that that was just like one of the only places in town to go, is that little shopping center right there, because across the street you had Safeway, and there you had Ray and Andy's Pizza and a couple other things in there, that eventually became Paul's. Everybody remembers Paul's. Later that evening, on Saturday, May eleventh, I attended the Cultural Arts Foundation Annual Spotlight Awards. Congratulations to all those winners, too, and our, our pillar of the arts, all the people that won awards that night, congratulations. Great, great event. Love the show tunes. That's my report.
Okay. Mayor Proton Kavala.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, May sixth, I also met with Urban Futures before our meeting. On Wednesday, May eighth, that morning was our Simi Valley Police Foundation meeting, so I was there, and one of the things we had was a presentation from leadership with their bleed control kits. So, that was very nice. They explained how they raised their money, where they were placing them, and the importance of them, so I think, thought that was something very worthwhile. On Thursday, May ninth, I attended my first Ventura County Animal Services Commission meeting, and I was privileged to meet our new leader of Ventura County Animal Shelters, Jackie Rose. It was her first meeting. She is a very, very experienced and very qualified person. She basically, she spoke about herself and her background, and everyone there was very, very impressed. There were a couple of animal groups there that hadn't met her yet, so they were, you know, a little concerned, they wanted to make sure we remain no-kill. We're not officially no-kill, but that's how we operate, according to the county. So, she very easily explained to them her feelings and, and made everyone feel very comfortable and going forward that she would do a great job. I also, they mentioned, did they meet with you, Brian?
They did.
Okay, they met with Brian. The county, obviously, as most of you know, we have two facilities. We have the main facility in Camarillo, we have the small facility here in Simi Valley. Those service eight of our ten cities in the county. The shelter at Camarillo is old and really needs to be replaced, so the county is going to be discussing about replacing it, and they'll be reaching out to the eight cities to assist, of course. So, just, it was just a heads up, that's why they wanted to meet with our Interim City Manager. One of the other things I found out, though, is they also have a foundation. They raise quite a bit of money at that foundation. They have pledged three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for the next fiscal year, and they usually have about six hundred thousand. So, they're always constantly raising this money and then, and then supplying things for the county, the animal shelter. They buy all the things that the county doesn't pay for, the toys for the dogs, extra walkers, volunteers, silly little things that you think aren't important, but they said when you've got dogs in that type of a shelter condition, to have them, have the toys and have beds and things like that, it helps with the shelter stress. That's really a big deal. But I met the lady, the head of the foundation, her and I exchanged cards, and I said, you know, we have that shelter in Simi, we should be helping the foundation out in this area somehow, too. So, we'll get together at some point in time and see if we can arrange something for Simi Valley also. On Friday, May tenth, I also attended the Simi Valley Police Department Police Recognition Dinner up at the Reagan Library. Great job, as always. It's so wonderful to honor all of our officers. It was very nice to see the special tributes to our officers that were there for the borderline. I know I posted that on my Facebook, and Sheriff Jeff Dean also made a comment that thankful to his partners at Simi P D, so that, that was very, very nice. I also attended leadership that Friday at noon at Simi Hills Golf Course and spoke to the leadership class. And on Saturday, May eleventh, I, I attended the Rotary Softball Tournament all day, so I was at Rancho Santa Susana, had a great time. We have a great softball community out here, and most of the people that play are very involved in the community in some way, shape, or another, and they support it, so it's a great time. And I also want to say, I hope everyone had a very, very happy Mother's Day. I-
I'm going to cry.
I had a wonderful one, I found out I'm going to be a grandma. So, so it was a very, very special Mother's Day, so I hope everyone else had a great Mother's Day.
Congratulate.
So, thank you. I didn't think I'd tear up.
All right. Let's see, I'm going to move forward pretty quick to Thursday, May ninth, I went to the V C O G meeting and found myself locked out, and I tried all the doors. I called Sue, she called them, and the, the bottom line is, it was a beautiful drive out to Camarillo, and it was a beautiful drive home, and the meeting was very short for me. So, I don't have a report on V C O G. Friday, May tenth, went to the Simi Valley Police Department Recognition Dinner, and I just have to echo what everybody else already said. It was a, it was a nice show, it went quickly, it, it was, it was great to see the recipients, and it was just a well-put-together thing, and thank goodness for a little bit of damp weather, we got to move inside, so it was, it was really great. And, let's see, I, too, went to the Sinorama. I, I hope, there, there was some friend of theirs that came for that ribbon cutting that was serving some cookies, and I got ahold of him, and I think he's going to come back and be looking for buildings here to open up his cookie business. And either that, or he's going to come back and shoot me for bothering him during the, the program. But at any rate, I wish those folks the best of luck at Sinorama. I've done business with that company with a prior owner, it's a good organization. Then, too, I, too, went to the Cultural Arts Center Foundation Annual Spotlight Awards. That was extremely entertaining, and I, too, congratulate all of the winners, and David Ralph for his pillar of, pillar of service award. So, that's the end of my report. So, our next thing, we finally get to, are there any, nine B, is anybody have anything they want to put on the next agenda, or-
Mr. Mayor.
On a future agenda?
I don't know if this is actually going to be an agenda item or not, but I think our, our council should move forward in the selection of a city manager by going through the process, starting with whatever we need to do to get the ball going, putting out the application, the ad, getting H R on it.
Okay.
Let me just say, you could only mention you want it on a future agenda at this point.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll work on agendas and that.
There you go.
I'm not sure how we can go about this, maybe the chief can help out, but I received a letter from somebody regarding drones, private drone usage, and invading the privacy of our residents. So, is that something we can discuss, or put in ordinance, or, I know it's, it's controlled by the F A A. I looked it up before I did stuff, but, or before I mentioned it, but I don't know if that's something that we can possibly look at as a city.
Let, let us do some research on that, and either we'll put something in the boxes, what we found out, or, or put it on the agenda.
Okay, thanks.